All right, thumbs up. All right, fantastic. I will call on the work session of the Hillsborough School District to order. Our first order of business is a COVID-19 update for our work session. And that's everybody, I bet.
That's it, yeah, we are. So with the changes that occurred and the incredible uptick in the number of cases, just with the quickly spread from person to person, wanted to provide you with an update of just what we've been doing and some of the challenges that that has presented. So we're going to have Travis kick us off first, and then other folks will be chiming in along the way. So Travis?
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me okay in the room? Great, good to see everybody. Hey, everybody's familiar with Omicron, and I know that you've been following the county case counts, and it's not great. But I can tell you that we have good systems in place to use data to make decisions about our schools. So I just want to click through a few different things that we're doing on a daily basis to make sure that we can operate schools safely and track both COVID cases, student attendance, and staff attendance and unfilled positions. These are the things that are kind of straining our systems right now across the state. So there are three data points we look at each day at 3:00. One is student attendance across schools, and we look at a percentage of students who are not present at school, and we cross-reference that with what we call required absences. Those are absences with students who are either isolating with COVID-19 or quarantined because of close contact. We also do a poll each day at 3:00, but we also do this at 5:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Our human resources department are working around the clock right now, and they're looking at our subsystem, and they're looking at the number of positions that are posted for subs, both with licensed and classified staff, and they're looking at the number of those that are unfilled. We also look at a data point about our front offices with secretaries, healthroom staff, office managers, principals and assistant principals, and we do an analysis of where we have our core front office teams impacted by COVID or absences otherwise. And we make decisions about which schools are red flags using those three data points. So I can tell you that to date, we have two schools that are in distance learning. We have Indian Hills Elementary and Brookwood Elementary School. I can tell you, both of these are unusual cases. In one case, we had a music specialist and an EL specialist and a family liaison all tested positive for COVID late in our first back. And because of their interaction with multiple cohorts of students, we were able to establish that about half of the school was in close contact and exposed to COVID through those staff members. And so we made the decision to go to distance learning. So I can give you counterexamples where we know we have multiple COVID cases across classrooms, but we're able to look at cohorts and close selectively rather than doing a whole school closure. When we look at that data, we do have a number of actions that we can take immediately. One of those is to deploy classified staff, administrative staff and teachers on special assignment from the central office to go and support in those schools. And I can tell you that big numbers of central office staff have been out in our schools this week and are much appreciated. I also wanted to highlight, though, that the problem with that strategy is that all the work that we're doing with curriculum and providing other supports for our staff in schools goes on hold when our teachers on special assignment and our leaders are out there. We're having to delay some of our plans moving forward. Issues that are really pressing are summer programming, curriculum adoption cycles, et cetera. So we're scraping by right now with compliance with federal mandates, state mandates, and other legal obligations that we have, especially in special education. And we're basically deploying all hands on deck other than that in our system right now. Another strategy that we have is closure. So we do have the opportunity to have a classroom cohort go into distance learning, or we have the opportunity to close a school. But we're doing everything we can to keep schools open for a number of reasons. One of which was confirmed today by OHA, which is that the data suggests that students in a controlled environment like a school where there's masking and hand washing and cohorting are actually safer from the spread of COVID than they are just out doing their thing. So we know that keeping kids in school both helps learning and also mitigates the spread of COVID, even with the Omicron variant. I can also tell you that we make these decisions about closures and quarantining still in collaboration with Washington County Public Health, and they continue to consult with us on a daily basis about the choices that we're making. Another strategy that we're using to make sure that the stress on our system is manageable is Dale and Frank have created a survey for our high school staff regarding how many times they're doing sub coverages for each other, period coverages during the day. And so we have an analysis each week of how many folks are covering and picking up periods for others. We have a number of absences of licensed staff per day, and that means that X number of periods are open for coverage if we can't find a sub to cover full time. Our first choice would be that we would get a substitute for an absent teacher. But we know that our subsystem is taxed, and therefore, we're asking teachers and principals to pick up open sections of courses in order to keep school open. Another strategy that we have implemented coming back from the holidays has been a pop-up clinic at the Oak Street campus. We have a couple of our test coordinators and nurses over there each day from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00. And we are able to use our Binax Now tests that we got from the state to test staff. We started with in the '50s each day, and yesterday, we did 111 staff tests during that four-hour window. And what that's able to do for us and for our community is to make sure that if I'm sick with cold-like symptoms or a fever, I can go in and get tested. And I know either I have COVID and I need to go into isolation, or I don't. And once my symptoms are resolved, I can go back to school with a somewhat of a clear conscience knowing that I'm not bringing COVID-19 into my school community. So that's been an opportunity for us to provide a service for staff that they cannot find with medical providers or at Walgreens right now. I know you all know the scarcity of tests nationally, and that's no different here in Hillsborough. We have placed an order for iHealth home kits, which are two tests in a packet with the reagent in the packet, which we'll be able to give to staff and students in order to test at home and hopefully return from quarantines and isolations quicker. Right now, we still have the big boxes of 40 Binax tests with just one squeezy bottle of reagent. So we're having to keep it in a clinic, and we're not able to distribute those tests. Happy to have the team chime in on any other things that you wanted to highlight tonight. Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead.
Travis, I'd be happy to share just about the communication we've sent out to all staff regarding sub-coverage. And folks, you know, the one thing that's amazing about our HSD staff is they're very dedicated to their work, and so they tried to hold out as long as they can before putting a sub in. And so we have communicated to all staff that we would prefer that they would put their subs in sooner. And then if we need to cancel those, we can do that. But it allows us to then look at where the needs are and deploy folks in the best way possible. So just wanted to share that with you.
Our entire goal as we've gone through this process is to keep schools open. We do believe that that's the best place for our kids. Not only the learning that takes place, but it's the safest place for them to be if we're finding. So we're doing everything we can to keep the schools open. We have had to close a few, as Travis mentioned, but the value is to keep them open as long as possible and to keep deploying the resources necessary to do that on a daily basis. So that's where we're driving from at this point. I do, you are going to see more happen today. Lisa's experienced it where you're going to see schools throughout the region start to close maybe a little more often. We're hoping to be able to continue to have the resources necessary to keep ours open.
Do any board members have any questions regarding the information we just heard?
Yes, I do. Yes, thank you. Happy New Year to everyone, by the way. I want to ask about the quarantining. And in the, how many of the folks that are close contact, go into quarantine, actually test positive later for the virus? Do we have those numbers?
You know what? Remember Washington County Public Health? But if Travis or somebody, if you have an idea, maybe you could share. But I think that feels like a Washington County Public Health question.
It is, and they track outbreaks and quarantines the best that they can. I mean, we give them our data. I can't tell you, Monique, a number like a percentage who do. I can tell you anecdotally that we check in daily. I check in with the nurses with Michelle Brady, our emergency preparedness manager and our contact tracing team lead. And we discuss the close-contact quarantining specifically of cohorts at elementary school, and we make a decision about, you know, whether to keep that classroom open or flip that classroom into a distance learning scenario. And I can tell you anecdotally that each time we have decided that there are multiple cases of positive coronavirus in a classroom and that we have decided to put the classroom into distance learning, that we have thanked ourselves later because we got two or three more positive tests in that classroom. And we will say, I think that was a scenario where we stopped community spread in the classroom. So I can tell you that I can't name an instance where we quarantined a cohort that we didn't find out that there was some kind of community spread, although I'm sure that has happened. So anecdotally, we think that our practices are pretty on point in terms of stopping community spread and not unnecessarily quarantining students.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any follow-ups? Or you want Yajira to come back to Monique in a minute if you have something else? Or Yajira, go ahead. I think you're still muted.
Can you guys hear me now? Are we still doing the random testing?
Yeah, if by random testing you mean the screening with OHSU. We're asymptomatic, folks. We are doing that at the original pilot schools. We have five schools, I believe, that are still participating in that pilot. That was voluntary. The students get a vial that they spit in, and they put it in the cold box in the morning, and then they get the results. I can tell you that right now, we have asked the question whether we should expand that to other schools. But currently, we have only detected one case out of hundreds, over 500 participating spit samples. We've only detected one positive case of coronavirus that was asymptomatic among the student samples. And so at this time, we've made the judgment call with cost-benefit analysis that it's not worth the infrastructure and the logistics that go into that to expand that testing at this moment. We don't know, as the landscape changes, what the next variant is. But we haven't been encouraged by public health to expand that, and we haven't talked ourselves into expanding that yet.
Okay. And then I guess another question is, how likely is what happened, say, for example, at Brookwood, likely to happen at other schools? And so I guess I just mean by, should we put on hold, say, like, like, for example, move music to distance learning or something like that when those teachers come into contact with multiple cohorts of students? And maybe pause that for at least, you know, to the end of the month, you know, or something, or to a point where we see like the cases are starting to decline?
Yeah, that was a unique instance of specialists coming in contact with students in close proximity. I won't make odds on the chances of this happening again. I've been surprised by what's happened with Omicron. But I can say that we reissued guidance to our principals to tell them, in any instance where you have a special or where you have a cohort that has to be within close proximity of a teacher, we need to move that. That means we could put a music teacher in a larger classroom to deliver the content of that special. That means we could change the venue for a music class. So we're taking a closer look at that because it did impact a large chunk of the school community at the school where that happened.
Seems like music, PE, library, maybe lunch. Those are staff members that may come in contact with multiple cohorts. Is that all right?
Yeah, we try to keep cohorts together, but they do interact with multiple adults. And that's all in line with the RSSL guidance. We are not doing anything unusual there. What we do need to do is remind those individuals that if you were to come down with COVID, even if you are double-vaxxed and boosted, you still would be responsible for reporting who might be close contacts. And really, where that's happening is adults who serve multiple cohorts, like you said, Mark, and then also specialists who work in small reading groups. You know, it's interesting that staff are being really responsible. And when they get COVID, especially the vaccinated staff who come down with the Omicron variant with a breakthrough case, it's really sad and heartbreaking to see them do the math on, you know what, I've been around these students, and I never thought this would happen to me because I've done everything right. And so, you know, we empathize with them, and they're doing everything they can. And it's just the fact of the matter that we're going to have some close contacts, especially with teachers who serve some of our most vulnerable students. So we're doing everything we can to remind folks that six feet of distance is achievable almost always. Everybody's, of course, wearing masks, washing hands. And there's those, the one-off instances of where, you know, in this room, the front row of students sits this close to me, and I have to tell you that they're within that six-foot bubble. So we're working through that, and we're reminding folks, especially with this highly contagious variant, to, you know, readjust their seating charts and how close they get to students.
Oh, Yajira's first question, you said one out of 500 asymptomatic. Does that sort of imply that there were more that were symptomatic that we just verified through that process?
We assume that the kids who don't have symptoms weren't at school for that test. So really, the OHSU sample is a huge sample of asymptomatic individuals. I mean, it's possible that I could spit in a vial and then develop some symptoms 24 hours later and then get the results. But we just, we're assuming that that screener is through OHSU's lab is purely to get a community sample as big as possible to be able to isolate folks who are asymptomatic. We predicted that a certain percentage of students would show up positive with COVID, and therefore, we'd be able to isolate them before they showed symptoms. But again, we've only known of one positive case that came back using that strategy.
Yeah, I think you're estimating that it's, this variant is contagious. Like, for every one person infected, they, I think, infect six to seven more people. So it's going to go through the community like wildfire. It's everywhere.
Which is kind of what we're seeing, right? And that's, I suppose, if it were 50% less harmful and twice as infectious, we'd see the same hospital numbers, but it's seven times more infectious. Michelle, do you have a question?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if this was already answered, but I figured I would ask it anyway. It's just like, is there like, is there a way where, so for example, a lot of like my teachers and like my fellow peers have seen like classes where like six to seven kids are all out sick. And a lot of them feel as if, you know, we're like, some of them feel like they're a week away from school closing or like two weeks away from closing. And a lot of them are just really worried. And I guess my question was just like, is there like, at what level are we closing schools? And like, are we like quarantining classes? And like, is there a way where like students and people can like prepare for that beforehand, before it happens?
I'm really glad you asked that question, Michelle, because that's something that we debate each day. At what point is there too much community spread? And would it be more responsible for us to close schools? There's a couple of factors, and then I'd invite others to chime in on how we make these decisions. But one is, and this seems counterintuitive, Michelle, students are spreading COVID less at school than they are on days off from school because of the consistent and controlled environment that we have with masking and hand washing and physical distancing. The second thing is that we have really encouraged students and families to be vaccinated. And vaccines continue to be one of the best strategies, if not the best strategy, in fighting the spread of COVID. And students who have been vaccinated are not getting COVID at rates as high as the unvaccinated. And therefore, we believe that students should be able to attend school and not have school closed down. We think it would kind of disincentivize vaccination if we sent everybody home when six kids got sick, just to use your example. And so there is part of public health where the county would come in and they would tell us with any kind of a contagious disease, you know what, we see this as an outbreak, and we would like you to shut this facility, be it a school or a bank or a store. But at this point, they're not asking us to close because they have some confidence in our ability to control the environment. And we're doing the mitigation strategies that they've recommended. And so at this point, when we learn that there are multiple positive cases in a classroom or a school, we're taking into account the fact that an outbreak at this point for the county is defined as five or greater positive COVID cases in a cohort. And so that would trigger that conversation. We're also looking at factors like, to what extent are we able to be certain that masks are worn the whole time? A big problem for us is like preschool and kindergarten where it's hard for those littles to wear their mask all the time. And so if we have multiple cases in an environment like that, we sometimes consider moves to distance learning. But to this point, even though we have large absences each day at our high schools, for instance, we've decided to keep the school open because we think we can operate schools safely. We know that students are being safe and not transmitting COVID to one another like they might be at home socializing. And we think that our attendance is actually better or equal to what it is when we go into distance learning as it is when we keep school open, even though our attendance is taking a hit right now just given the amount of illness. So those are factors in play when we decide whether to close school or not.
Seth, you have a question?
Yeah, and this might have ended up being a better public health question, in which case, just wave me off here. But I thought I'd ask it because I think it's an important thing to get out there. Are we fairly confident that their numbers in terms of COVID, like, or in terms of COVID accurately reflect how many people in our community who have been out sick more generally actually have it? Because I know that there's been a lot of issues for people who are trying to get tested these days. You just aren't able to find time. So are we like factoring that in or thinking about it or accounting for it when we're looking at this? Just like, how has testing shortage impacted our like ability to be aware of COVID in our schools among students and community members who might not be aware of or have access to the same staff testing facilities you were talking about?
Yeah, I would defer to Washington County Public Health on that. And I can actually forward that question to them, the confidence that they have that the data they're publishing is representative of how many folks have COVID in light of the testing shortage. I know in talking with them on Monday, Seth, that they are aware of the shortage of rapid antigen tests and the limit on like PCR tests happening at places like Kaiser that we depend on. And they're fully aware that we're probably undercounting. It's also impossible to look at that graph from Washington County. I believe that we're undercounting by a lot because we're like tripled the spike of the Delta variant right now, according to the county counts. So I could not answer that from a community health standpoint.
Okay, but if you could forward that, that would be an answer that I'd be interested to have. Thank you, and I totally understand.
I would suggest, yeah, we know it's pretty widespread, or it seems like that's pretty accurate. And the count, I think, is off in both directions. I've used two at-home tests since January 1st just to make sure that I was not, you know, I didn't have any symptoms. But I didn't report those. So there's a couple of negative tests. And I think I've heard anecdotally, so you know, one of the side effects of being elected and be in the board chair is that other elected officials want to reach out to you sometimes. I've heard, you know, many other stories of community where somebody tested positive at home, and they were symptomatic, so they just stayed home. They didn't report to Washington County, they just stayed home. So I think there's probably an accuracy on both ends, but I think it's pretty safe to say that it's widespread. Monique, so I think Yajira got her hand up first. Let's circle back around and start from the front.
So my question is too, so for the kids, like, let's say that are asymptomatic but need to stay home, can they, are they logging into their classrooms like via distance learning? Is that happening like at like elementary level or just high school? Or how is that working?
Yeah, I'll defer to Audrey about that one. You meant taking that one, Audrey, to tell what's going on in classroom.
You mean like when we were in hybrid, Yajira?
Well, yeah, well, I imagine that right now, we have, you know, multiple students gone from a classroom because they're either in close contact or they're asymptomatic. So they're really like, I guess, not sick. Like, they can still learn, but they just can't be in the classroom. So how are we connecting those students?
So that has been a little bit more of a challenge, obviously, as we've had more cases come up. But what we have through our district is the base is Google Classroom. So students have been using Google Classroom since the start of the school year, in which they can access their learning. Typically, either teachers record some lessons for them or they livestream certain periods of, points of their day for students to access. It is not the same level as we did last year, obviously, in CDL, because they're also still teaching, you know, 80% of their students in front of them. So we're trying to find a balancing act with that. I know some parents have requested, you know, just to be able to see the recording, and some have said the livestream doesn't work as well. Just again, trying to find a balance, giving them resources that they can access. We have a lot of great tools through Wonders and Maravious where students can be doing some of the digital components at home that are pushed out through the Google Classroom. At the secondary level, kids tend to get onto their Google Classroom a lot more and just utilize it and go through it. And teachers have slides. I think at the high school and the middle school level, it's a little easier. With littles, it's definitely more of a challenge, and that's been tough as we have seen the spike in getting kids just connected. And we're also balancing as parents are trying to figure out what to do with students at home and staying quarantined and having access to the classroom and adjusting their schedules. We've been kind of working just one-off with families as well. So it's definitely been challenging when they're quarantined at home, for sure. So, but I think our teachers are doing an amazing job and really trying to get what they can to kids while still trying to do their jobs at school. Thank you.
Jordan, can you maybe follow up a little bit? Like, what percentage of the sort of hotspots and, you know, ad hoc bandwidth that we set up during conferences? How much of that is still in play?
We still have quite a few of the hotspots out there. We actually have just started to work on sort of re-collecting and turning down some of those. We haven't started that yet, so we're not going to shut some of those down at this point. But the vast majority, we still have all of them. I would say about a third to a half of them are still in use.
And when we switch more, when the situation forces us to switch a school to CDL, we're doing everything we can on a digital front to follow up on those?
Yeah, so we still have.
That's one of the steps for our teachers in the checklist. They actually reach out, and we make sure that families have those access points. So, and that was something we did with the Welcome Back conferences as well. We, that was one of the things that we did check in on just to make sure that they had Wi-Fi access. So we are circling back with that as well.
Every school still has backup devices available?
Monique, you have a question?
I do, thank you. And I'm not sure anyone can answer this question, but I'm going to put it out there anyway. Is there anyone looking into, or how are we assessing or weighing the risk between the mildness of this variant and the danger to these kids with their mental health and the impact that's having, especially with all the behavioral problems and such that we saw at the beginning of the year? Is that taken into consideration? And how is that weighed? How is that looked at?
I can, I can.
I think that's one of the reasons we're trying to keep schools open for as long as we possibly can. We can certainly remain open if you try to do that. But go ahead, Travis.
Yeah, I don't, um, Monique, I think that the values that you're communicating with your statement are that you'd like kids to be in school and that you'd like students' mental health and their behavioral health to be supported. I hear that in your question. And I, I don't set up as an alternative in my mind, safety from a disease and safety from, uh, mental illness or a lack of support for socially emotional wellbeing. I put them, um, in the same sphere. Like we need to keep kids safe from disease and from this pandemic. And we also need to ke- take care of students' mental, socially emotional wellbeing. And so I, I, I think the, the construct out there seems to be like a false alternative between keeping kids safe from disease and supporting kids with socially, emotional and mental health. And so, uh, my answer to that question is we're gonna do both.
And Monique, as, as I mentioned before, our entire goal is to keep school open. And, um, we know that there's going to be instances where we can't do that, where we have to send some students home, where we have to shut down classroom, we have to shut down school. It's one of the reasons also that we focused on the mental health needs of the students as we have gone through this entire fall and winter. So we're getting better at that. The needs are significant, but the goal is to keep school open.
Okay, thank you.
I think that something that may be helpful also as this progresses for us is just being able to see, I, I think we have how many school campuses total? And I, I think being able to see like at a hundred percent, how many are still operating as normal? And just like in the board update maybe on Friday, that we can get an update so that we can just continue to be appraised of like our, if, if things are getting better, things are getting worse, just for us to be aware as we get community input. The only question that I had, um, Travis, um, was regarding the quarantine time? And wondering if that's something that is going to change or if that's gonna stay the same? And is it different depending on vaccination status?
Yeah, thank you. This is super complicated and we're gonna publish some, uh, bullets on this, I think on Thursday. Beth and our team have been putting together some, um, updates based on the CDC guidance, which has now come down to the state and K-12 level. Um, basically, uh, we can shorten quarantine and isolation if folks are asymptomatic and they can get a negative test on day five, they can return on day six. That's being referred to as a five-day quarantine. It's a little more complicated than that. The other thing that's important to understand is that anyone who's vaccinated and who doesn't have symptoms is not quarantining or isolating. We do have folks who are vaccinated, who are testing positive, et cetera, or who get sick. Those folks are doing, um, you know, they're staying home, either too sick for school or with a positive test they're isolating. That said, what we're noticing is that symptoms can sometimes resolve within five days. And if you are fever-free without medication and you can get a negative test on day five, you will be able to return on day six. So that's, that's in general the shift that we're seeing. And that affects both quarantines through close contact and, uh, isolations with positive COVID tests. Uh, stay tuned for more information. We'll be publishing more clarity on that change in the coming days.
I didn't catch Travis, if you said vaccination status is, does that impact the number of days?
It doesn't impact the number of days per se. Um, it does impact people's experience sometimes of COVID. So what we're seeing is that, um, if, so first of all, if you're vaccinated and you are close contact, someone who has COVID, you do not quarantine, do not have symptoms. But that's one way that vaccines impact quarantine. If you have a vaccine and you test positive, or if you're sick, you do need to, uh, isolate if you test positive. Positive, and if you're too sick for school, you need to stay home and try to get a test. And we have a, a clinic set up for our teachers in order to do that. We, there's a lot of teachers in the spot, especially coming back from the holidays where they were experiencing illness. And only a small percentage of them are testing positive in our clinic. So we're trying to sort out who's sick and who, uh, has COVID.
Yeah, I think, I think it, so with the mitigation strategies, we have masking, distancing as much as possible. If you're vaccinated and there's just an explosion in your classroom, you don't have to go.
Thank you.
The, uh, the iHealth, oh, sorry, Michelle, you have a question?
Yeah, this is like a kind of quick question. So if so, just to clarify, so if someone had tested positive for quarantine, no, sort of for COVID, and they quarantined for like, say, nine days. If they do a self, like rapid test at home, like one of those at-home kits, that is a valid, like, and it comes out negative, that's valid to go back to school? Or does it have to be like an official PCR, like test?
Oh, thank you, uh, Michelle. That, for a while, we were sort of saying PCR and that the rapid antigen test was less reliable. Right now, we're being encouraged to use the rapid antigen test as much as possible. That's the Binax now or the iHealth. So that, that is a valid test. If you've got an at-home rapid antigen test, you can use that essentially shorten your quarantine, like you said.
And so, Michelle, Michelle, your point, it's, it's day six, not day nine, or nine to 10 anymore. So yeah, if you are asympto- if your symptoms have cleared up, no fever, and you test negative with a Binax or iHealth at home, yeah, you're back.
We're saying test on day five, return on day six. That's the CDC guidance.
And, and, uh, so my question was, the, the iHealth ones that you're talking about distributing, so, so in the media, we've seen some discussion of test to stay. And, you know, I think this was before the Omicron surge, but so are, are the iHealth ones we're talking about distributing sort of part of that ODE plan to do test to stay?
Yeah, I'm not sure why the names switched. We've, we've been using Binax from the state for a while and now iHealth is the big new contract. And they're sending thousands of Binax or iHealth tests to the state. And, um, in the last two days, I think we've had a signup sheet where our, um, superintendent or designee orders up the iHealth tests in a quantity related to what we think we need. And what we'd like to do is be able to, like you said, Mark, with a, in a test to stay scenario, we would like to be able to distribute those straight to families so they can do one of the tests immediately and then one of the tests days four or five. And that would keep students in school. There's a, I can't get, I'm not getting the days, uh, spread apart exactly right with the different protocols. But there's the test to shorten your quarantine, day five, come back day six. That would be useful to have an iHealth test. There's the test to stay, which is a cohort of second graders. And we're gonna make sure everybody who, uh, ticked test and is negative can stay and never go home for quarantine. And then a few days later, we test them again. That's how the test to stay works.
Does anybody else have any questions on this front, on the update front?
And thank you for staying on top of the ever-changing, always moving information and, um, being flexible and adjusting to ensure that we can stay open as much as possible.
On a related topic, I'd, I'd love to get the sort of go around the boardroom, board members. Uh, this feels pretty safe to me, people choosing to be here or not here, or masked up the entire time. Uh, I understand it's a surge and people have different levels of risk tolerance. So, uh, I guess other board members, something like our January 25th meeting, our meetings in February, uh, how do we feel about having an in-person component and a virtual component, or switching to just virtual? Um, so they'll always be based on the new law of in-person and virtual component. That's, that's the thing that's gonna happen forever. Um, so, but, but how do people feel about continuing to have an in-person component for board meetings? Anybody else have any thoughts on the issue, whether or not to maintain an in-person component?
I think we should maintain an in-person component. I'm just not there tonight because my belly is not happy. I ate something that didn't agree with me.
Nancy?
Um, I believe it or not, um, I would support a, an in-person component if we can. Um, as you may or may not know, I am, uh, I was COVID positive on Christmas Day and have been in quarantine since the 26th with escalating issues. And I am raring to get out of my house and out of quarantine and out of the spare bedroom on the first floor and back to my life. So, um, I would look forward to being with you, but I knew today that wasn't the day for me. I've not finished my heavy doses of meds, so I'm doing the best I can. And I thought it was better if I stayed and kept myself to myself today.
Yeah, and, and I would not be suggesting that in-person be a requirement for anyone. I'm just trying to get everybody sort of, take everybody's chance to turn on whether or not you're comfortable with the idea of us continuing to have an in-person component of board meeting. And if you choose to come or not, that's your personal choice.
Absolutely. One of the things that I've done is, uh, I actually asked Cabinet, um, to be at home this evening. And we're just trying to limit the number of people in any space. So, um, we'll continue to do that as well, okay?
And, and so any other board member wanna weigh in on that front? Yeah, she in?
Yeah, so I, I am also open to having an in-person component as an option. I do though also want to recognize the incredible amount of, um, logistics that go into both in-person and hybrid and online and all of that. And so just a huge shout out to our tech team, um, for making this happen. And, you know, unless things change, um, to where we would revisit potentially going to a fully, um, online model, for the time being, I think, um, I would be okay with having an opponent, in-person component.
So our, so our next meeting would be the 25th, is that right, Rose? Next meeting is the 25th, that would be a regular session? If we have an in-person component, how do people feel about audience time and the room and audience time virtually?
I definitely think that it's, um, maybe limiting, I think it's hard to limit the capacity of people when we have kind of been open whenever, whenever someone, whenever, uh, we might get public comment, you have no idea how many people might show up. But I think in that case, to ensure that we can continue to operate, I would advocate to have our public comment be mailed in or video or email, however that we go out with.
Yeah, I think, just my two cents, I, I think we have to put limits on the amount of people that are allowed in the room. And I would hate for someone to come here expecting to be able to speak to us in person and be turned away and have to tell them to try to get to a computer. So why, why I don't love the idea of not having people be here to do public comment in person, I also worry about the side effects of, I want to make sure everybody can, who wants to speak to us has a chance to. Uh, worry about not being able to accommodate that if we have some in person. Nancy, you have something?
Strongly in support of allowing the community to determine if they want to be, uh, in face-to-face. And, and also asking that communications, uh, communicate with our community to let them know what the options are, what the restrictions on those options are and what our expectations for if they determine that they wish to come face-to-face. But I absolutely want them the opportunity to walk in masked up, of course, and to, to have, uh, their show of support and/or whatever for the district.
So, so just sort of spitballing or whatever, it's a work session, it's a little more free form. Uh, if we have room for 10 people and 15 show up, how, how would we manage that?
Honestly, I'm hoping that with good communications of the community, they'll understand that they have to sign up, first firm, first come, first served. We confirm who the first ten are and then anybody else who has signed up, we should simply tell them that we have run out of space. We've had our capacity. Thank you, but you are welcome to submit your comments via, uh, the, the message and, and, and on phone or however else the other options are.
Rose, how frequently do people, or Beth, I guess you're in, it's two of either one of you. How frequently do people plan ahead and let us know? And how frequently do people just show up and fill out a board comment card when they're already here?
Um, well, I, I think our, our last radio session meeting was a pretty good indication because we did have several people that wanted to speak. And, you know, about half were in person and about half were online. Um, so, but I agree, if, especially if we get information out in advance and perhaps modify our Google form to be a place where people can indicate if they do intend to be in person. Um, then we can utilize that as a way to know, um, who can come in. I think that has also assisted us with, um, being able to kind of help a bit of crowd control too.
You, you all are much more in tune with the, is this how we'll likely set up for the board meeting? Are we sitting up there?
This, I'll jump in, this is a much easier setup for us to run because I can, like, Kira's running everything tonight herself.
Yeah.
To do the other one out with the mics and like the more complicated camera and everything else, it takes three people.
So we wouldn't have, in this configuration, we wouldn't have much room for safely accommodating two of the audience members.
If we're doing both regular and work session, will we do work session upstairs and regular session down here?
Will we have to do work session upstairs? Because this is a work session and we're down here right now.
We could have the audience wait outside.
Like outside the building, not outside the end.
Then we'd have to convert the room in a matter of moments.
Well, we wouldn't, in that, I'm saying we wouldn't convert the room. We would continue to just do the board meeting without going to the dais, just stay here. So I mean, we're not out, we're not six feet apart up there, we're not, so I mean,
We could do.
This feels much safer to be than sitting up there for what it's worth.
Yeah, we could, we could stay this far apart in this format and put some, we can, Rose and I can take a look and figure out how many chairs we can fit and how many audience members we can have.
About, yeah, we could definitely check and see how many.
Five or so?
I'd put five out originally and then we'll move them to.
Nobody can, okay.
Because we decided not to have.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, I, me personally, I love the idea of having in-person as an option. I don't want to turn anyone away.
Yeah, I think the only thing is it's just communicating ahead of time that you're comfortable this week. And as people submit, they'll know that, you know, they want.
Right, I just worry a little like, most people who, you know, historically have been able to come in, I just come in. Like, so people who are used to just being able to show up that night might not plan that.
But they, people that are showing up, they do look at the agenda.
Oh, that's fair.
And so.
And we're, it's published, all right, we'll only be able to accommodate. Right, so please, please act early and indicate your preference or whatever. And then if we go over whatever we think is a safe number, you can sort of reach out to them and let them know. All right, so I, I'm supposed to shut up and talk last as board chair. Sorry, uh, Monique and then she in?
So just an answer to your question, Mark, I, I agree with, uh, what Nancy said. I think we should have, uh, availability for the audience to be there, um, for the community to be there. And, um, and make sure that communication is out there, highlight it in the agenda, whatever the case may be, to make sure that the public understands the limitations.
In terms of trying to accommodate more folks, could we potentially have a rotating system where we have people who want to provide public comment, come give their comment and leave and have the next person come and therefore be able to not limit 10 people in. Um, and just kind of have people come and go after they have shared their comment?
Might be more, I think that's worth thinking about, I guess. Like, we could, if we're, if whomever the cabinet and board members are out here, you could sort of safely filter them there and out. Now, it's worth, it's worth thinking about anyway. Cabinet's like, oh, my God, really?
Hey, Mark. Yeah.
Mark, it's Nancy. I just, um, I think what I'm asking for is that we look at it. We've got a couple of people to consider. We've got communications, we've got technical, we've got facilities to work out. There's three different aspects of doing it. I think we can do it. I want those people to put their heads together and figure out the most flexible way that we can allow the public to present themselves. And then let them come back to us and tell us how they want to get it done. It looks like you guys have a perfect setup. I get it. I'm just saying that we ought to be flexible enough to let the experts come together and allow as many people as possible to be, to be there. To be honest, I don't think they're gonna want to come, but if they do, we can accommodate them accordingly. And then, of course, communicate, communicate, communicate. Sorry, Beth, communicate.
And I guess, to your point, Travis, this is what your team has been doing pretty regularly is, and, and a lot can change before January 25th. So, right, I think, uh, I don't know that we're making a decision tonight. I think we're sort of, I want to just talk through it, the options with everybody. And, yeah, it, it's sort of the same thing with, uh, classrooms and extracurricular activities is for as long as we can safely accommodate them, we should be doing so, right? So, so I guess, you know, I, I, I think the board generally trusts the administrative team to sort of determine what the safety levels are and what we can do. So, but as we get, as we get closer, um, to January 25th, you know, I'm sure Mike will have a discussion with me and maybe Nancy as vice chair and Rose. And we'll, we'll sort of communicate to the rest of the board either. and we'll, we'll sort of communicate to the rest of the board, either in, it's not a prompt, what's it called? The non-Friday board updates, does it have a name? Don't they have a name?
Interim.
Interim, an interim board update, sort of as we get closer. All right, and so I wanted to get, it feels like most of us are thinking, if we can safely accommodate in-person, we should do so, and that if something changes and we cannot, we understand.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on the, I'm not going to say that. Anything else on the, I stopped myself, I'm pretty good about that, on the COVID situation? All right. Our next topic is when we agreed to continue with the city of Hillsborough and our, and Washington County, with the student resource officer in our buildings, we decided that we would like regular updates. So what we have now is a regularly scheduled update regarding the school resource officer intergovernmental agreement.
Casey?
Yeah, thank you, Mark and board and those visiting virtually. This is the fall update, so we're going to look back a little bit at the start of the school year. As with everything, the challenges that we're facing have also challenged some of our SROs and ability to be within schools. I have a team of folks that are going to help with this presentation tonight. So we have Commander Mike Ruschus from HPD, Lisa Erickson with us, HSD. Francesca is going to give an update on the screen when it comes to professional development. So there's quite a few people that are going to share on this. Next slide, just want to share kind of, here's kind of our objectives for tonight to give you a summary of reviewing the IGA objectives, a data summary for the fall. Commander Ruschus is going to give an update on the HPD side and then again, talk about professional development calendar and updates to our training. Next slide. This is just kind of a review of all the work that we did throughout the, the year prior to the vote last spring to, to retain and, and update our IGA. So again, really what came out of that summary of all of the information is really the three focuses of the SRO program. One, fostering a positive school climate, education, law enforcement and crime prevention. Another big aspect to this IGA is the amount of provided, HSD provided professional development. Francesca's going to go over that, but everything from home visit, trauma-informed care, equity, trauma-informed response, all of those things that we're doing in the district that our staff get, the SROs as a team are going through a yearly calendar. So we'll be able to have a slide to show you the update of the year-long training calendar, where we've been this fall. Additionally, SROs are taking part in some of our safety care training and also our state schools training that all of our employees go through. So quite a bit of professional development and training has gone in as a result of the updated IGA. Again, I think the main purpose of the renewed IGA is part of our community accountability that we are committed to. Some of that stuff goes as far as the uniform that we're wearing, the sophomore uniform. Lisa's going to go through the data collection. Basically, all of our SROs, both with the city and with the county, are logging their hours and classifying on, on how they're spending their time, whether they're at school or investigations on call. That was part of our commitment. Officer and deputy recruitment and selection, this was another focus of the IGA. Francesca was able to participate in the, the last round of SRO selections with the city of Hillsborough and able to fulfill that process and provide input to the, to the commander and, and the sergeants and that, that kind of thing for who we are bringing into our schools. And then, I think, certainly not the last piece of it, but a big piece of that component with the IGA is more clear defined roles and responsibilities for what HSD staff is responsible for doing, things like general attendance and, and then what differentiation is that with law enforcement when it comes to interacting with our staff at schools. I will say, and Commander Ruschus will probably explain that, that is kind of a, a learning experiment with what our schools are asking our SROs to do and what our SROs are feeling comfortable with doing. So I think we're, we are processing through all of those things. But I think the bottom line is that our SROs are, are eager and they're in this business to make a difference in our schools and community. You see that with some of the professional development. It's not easy stuff, going through the professional development where we are as a district and bringing in HPD and the county sheriff's office, and it's different. And I think they've really come a long ways in understanding what our goals are as a district and our, our need to serve students. Francesca will cover that quite a bit. So that's kind of where we wanted to go with the SRO review. Next slide. I think what I'm going to do is, right before we go to the, the data summary, I'm going to have Commander Ruschus is going to speak for a few minutes on kind of the HPD reports of the fall.
Hi, everyone. Hey, it's Mike Ruschus with Hillsborough Police. So I got to say to the board members, it'd be much better if I could see your faces right now, but I'm okay because I, I work better with that reaction, good or bad. So, so you know me, I've been with Hillsborough a long time and I'm a former school officer myself. And I will say, as we've entered into the IGA, it, as Casey has alluded to, it has defined and helped strengthen our role. In my day, when I was a, a school officer, it was more do whatever we want and show up. And it, it wasn't as organized. We had the heart for it, but I think this develops better police officers and a better service and a better product we deliver to the kids and to the schools. So, in my current role, I oversee the investigations unit, I work with Sergeant Gilbert and the officers that work in the schools. I will say that this experience talking to you is, is much more, oh, there we go, is much more fun than speaking to the Hillsborough City Council. So, really good about that. You know, when I was thinking about this, and of course, Casey and Lisa, Francesca and I talked, and I was ruminating a bit about what this year has been so far. And I, I came up with a few bullet points. It's been emotional, it's been messy at times on our end. It's been a learning experience, challenging, connective and extremely rewarding. So if, to give you a visual for that, I have to say it's pretty much like a puppy. So if you take anything away from this, just say, well, what are the school officers really like in the schools? What's, it's like having a puppy. So they're really rewarding and beautiful, but they're sometimes a little bit of work. So, to talk a little deeper about it, and I'd like you to kind of overlay your thoughts on my comments about how policing has changed and how the expectations and attitudes from society have rightfully, in many ways, changed and in some ways become less trusting and, and a little bit more problematic for how we serve people. If that's our overlay, it makes sense that we would have a strong IGA with the district because the most important work we do in, in the police department relates to obviously kids, but also any of those that truly need our services. So, to, to respond to that, we've been working harder on communicating, over-communicating to our partners, the students, the parents and staff. But, you know, this communication's really been facilitated greatly and nurtured by Casey and Lisa Erickson, Francesca and every administrator in person in the buildings where our officers work. Our activities and interactions in the buildings have been driven by the IGA. And it's been a necessary playbook for us in the development of our program. We always had a strong program with a lot of people and a great relationship with the district. But as Casey said, there were some things we needed to, to make sure that we were solidifying a little better and codifying. And this agreement is really not that different than the way we've been doing and operated this job in, in schools because it's been 30 years probably since we've been in the schools. And we're proud of that relationship. But this agreement specifically is addressed from our end and how our officers respond. Threat assessment, home visits, truancy, the things that we're asked to do so that we have better defined lanes for, for what those are. But in my meetings with the school officers and, and their leadership, what we overlay that with and what we try to make our, our driving force is, what are we going to do that's best for the kids? Because the agreement is the agreement. But we also know it's a day-to-day, situation-by-situation decision. And I think while that IGA guides us, I think we have the right leadership, Lieutenant Schrader, who works with me, Sergeant Gilbert and myself to catch any smags in that process. Some highlights from our end, things that make us feel good and, and positive about it has been the equity and trauma-informed training with Hillsborough School District. Now, when you put a bunch of cops in any training, you get a little bit of attitude to begin with. I think we went through some of that, but then I also saw a change in them. You're helping them not just serve students in the buildings and the staff better. You, by doing this, I think we're really helping them be better police officers. And I would submit that while we do some of that training on our own as a police department, it's much more valuable because they can then take those things that we're talking about and learning, thanks to Francesca and her folks, right in practice in the buildings and in the schools because now they can see the positive. And I think we've turned that corner. We've worked on relationship building with staff and kids, mental health evaluations, risk assessments, overall, most importantly, communication. Lisa Erickson's role in development has been very helpful for us because, A, we have a, a level of trust, but we also have someone that we know how she works and how she's going to work. And her deep knowledge of being a school officer for so many years is valuable. We are growing partnerships with school admin and teachers and kids and then planning an intervention when crime and possible violence may occur. That's the other end of the spectrum where, yeah, we are those firmly trusted faces in the buildings, but there are law enforcement functions that we have to responsibly and I guess progressively attack and deal with. Challenges we've had, I'll stop rambling in a minute, COVID, obviously. I heard your, at the work you've been doing tonight, we have the same challenges in the police department. We've had a bit of a spike in our, in our own workplace. So it, it has impacted our staffing, our activities and our planning. We can't do and be kind of as, as like everybody, as connective and as present as we always were. What's really a challenge has been socializing and working through our agreement. By socializing that, that's more an issue on our end so that our police officers aren't saying, well, here's the district telling us what to do. No, no, hey, school officer, no, here's an agreement we made as a department with the district to better serve. And I think they're grabbing on to that. A challenge we have has been classroom presentations and, and being more vocal and present in our buildings. And then, of course, our own police department staffing issues we've recently had with this surge. The bottom line is we're operating under a strong framework and agreement that's helped both entities fulfill our missions. When you look at the Hillsborough Police mission, if we're living by the IGA, it really helps us kind of embody that mission, focusing on serving. Our progress together has been steady, thoughtful and constructive. I appreciate the meetings I have with Casey that are, they're plain spoken and we talk about hard issues and we talk about things that need to be addressed. We plan to continue this work and continually flesh out the imperatives of the contract. The big picture is the service to the schools and the kids and the safety and security of the people will continue, understanding now better our roles in the agreement. So I guess if I had to sum it up, it's going as well as I could expect and I think we've got good attitude compliance and grabbing on to the ideas that we're getting our officers to, to spend time in the schools with. So I probably talked too long, but thank you.
That's right. Thanks, Mike. Okay, we're going to, I'm going to turn over Lisa, she's going to kind of go over what this chart means, just kind of hours of the SROs, keeping track. We've tried to categorize some of them into sections and she can give you some examples and summarize this sheet.
Yeah, sure. Thank you so much, everybody, for being here. I am fairly new with the district. For some of you that don't know me, my name is Lisa Erickson and I'm working closely with Casey right now in public safety as a public safety chief and security manager. My former life, I did work with this gentleman over here for many, many years. And so the partnership is, is, is really seamless in that particular run there. And I have a good idea about what these numbers mean and, and some of the things that we do. But first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for continuing the school resource officer program. It's, for me, just as an example, and spending so much time in law enforcement, it really was one of the best things I ever did. And I still can't even walk in the community or go into a store without somebody knowing who I am, just because of service I've been able to provide to staff and families and community members just because of the hub of the school. It's definitely a hub for the community, for people to go get help. So thank you again. Some of these numbers here, what happens is, is every month, the sergeant for the Hillsborough Police, Lee Gilbert, and the sergeant for the Washington County Sheriff's Office, Chad Martin, those folks compile numbers from their staff below them, the actual school officers doing the work, and try to put it in a little bit of a data collection so we could kind of see where areas are, are being focused on, even with the challenges that we're having. And so in the first category there, it talks about community engagement and relationship building. And that's somewhat a catch-all, I think, really for community policing, if you will. It really involves just officers being out there, whether it's an organized event or even maybe something as casual as walking in hallways and being in a lunch area with the kids and talking with people. It's about engaging and creating relationships with people, but being there for them and creating those relationships so that they're there and solid. So when people do need help, there oftentimes you are their, you are their go-to. So, home visits comprised of maybe a staff member or an administrative person has a concern about a kiddo or a family and the officers will go out to the home and make a visit. Family outreach really could be anything. Again, it could be an organized event or something where we are doing something for the family to get them engaged in an equitable fashion. And then any kind of student interaction, whether, again, hallways in our community, at organized events. So they spend obviously a lot of hours doing that because you do that every day. The training and the professional development, that would also include the training that the Hillsborough Police are required to do for certain certifications that they're required to keep for their police stuff, but then it also includes the stuff that Fran and other administrative folks have been putting together to provide that IGA training that is, is going on. The school presentations and meetings is just exactly that. Anytime the officers can get into the classrooms or do any presentations, that's always a positive thing. And sometimes it's very organized and maybe PowerPoint oriented where they're talking about laws or different process, processes, but it could also be something where something as simple as just popping into a classroom after kids are coming in from recess and saying, hey, I'm officer so-and-so and this is what I do today. So some of those things can really be very simple. And on a special note on that one, I know we were talking about struggling a little bit. I know we were talking about struggling a little bit about getting our officers to be in the schools and engaging and doing that in-person thing. There will be some things up and coming where maybe some of the officers will be coming in a little bit more, maybe during an advisory period. Hasn't come down yet to you guys, but I was, Fran, I was talking to Heather about that. So anyway, we have some things where the team that Fran works with have come up with some really good ideas to get the officers to engage more. So we're going to talk about that in more of our training. And then the investigations and calls for service, that can really encompass a lot of stuff. It may or may not be a police-written report. The majority of the time, there are not arrests, although there can be a juvenile arrest. But a lot of these things here, when you look at the one that says child abuse and DHS, that means that there has been a report to the Department of Human Services on some level and the report has come down to the police department. And the officers who are assigned to the schools, maybe where some of the children go to the school, will start the investigation there and contacting kids and family and going from there. And then, of course, mental health. You know, that might be something where they are going into the counselor's office and talking with kids or they're going on a call for service where a child is really struggling at home. Or maybe they're having to facilitate a transport to the hospital for a child until parents can get there for their own safety. And then the threat assessment, it should say there, and then the Sexual Incident Response Committee. Those are two large things that the officers are involved in and that the school district does, basically does the threat assessments to keep schools safe. But the police department also has their own threat assessment team. And so sometimes those are a little bit intertwined depending on what we've got going on. The Sexual Incident Response Committee is a committee where we review cases where there's been some sexually acting out behavior in schools or maybe there's been some type of assault or something like that. So different things can occur in that realm. And then other is just anything you can think of. I lost my phone, my car got broken into. Somebody stole my gym shoes. Yeah, traffic issue. It could really be anything, anything that generates a call for service.
Thanks, Lisa. Next slide. Francesca is going to cover the professional development calendar.
Good evening, everyone. Listed on here are the things that we picked directly off of the IGA that we said we would cover in professional development. And so the first one, Safe Schools Training. It's one that's typical that our staff complete before the school year starts. So that was also completed by our SROs. I would like to say, working with Mike and with our sheriff has been like a highlight of this year. They are excellent people to work with. And they have their mind really in the place to really look at moving our students forward and the work that we do. And so the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Training, we had started that back in December. We were scheduled to do it this week, but due to staffing on both ends of our spectrum, both the police department and in the district, we've had to reschedule that to the end of the month. So we'll get back to that in a little while. Safety care training is the training that we offer through our Student Services Department. And it's really about de-escalation and regulation strategies with students. We have two sessions of restorative practices and restorative circles. We talked about trauma-informed care. We had two sessions with them already in November. And I think that training was the pivotal point of what changed our relationships between officers, law enforcement agents and our school representatives. And then really talking about home visits and training and what we do in HSD as opposed to what would be typically done by a police department and how we buddy up people to go with our SROs just so that we can also, if we have those built-in relationships, it's not going to be as scary for parents when they do see the SRO, especially if the student knows the person. But it has been a pleasure working with them. All of the PD, which is yearly, this section of the PD should be completed right before or immediately after spring break. And then we'll be able to do some assessment of how much we've really, look at our data to see how much we've grown. We're doing exit tickets at the end and we've really formulated, put together a strong team and we've dwiddled it down to the bare essential people that we want. And we have made partners with many of our SROs. And you can just, just the other day, I was out at Century and I was able to talk to Officer Scott Dillon. And I know some of the people on the team have made excellent relationships with other SROs. So that slow, that relationship is going to take some time, but I think we've made headway. And once we know we have that relationship and that connection with them, we can move with the stuff that they are doing because they are really solid individual people who are open to hearing the training that we're doing and the things that we're doing in Hillsborough. And so that's in the nutshell, what we're going over in our training. And I didn't mean to skip over the students with disabilities. We will have a group of Student Services Representatives that will be coming in to talk a little bit more in depthly about autism, reactive attachment disorder and how to serve students who are presenting behaviors that are bigger than what we're used to. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Francesca. That is our update. Feel free to open up to questions or any other comments. I don't see any raised hands online. Do you want to start here again?
Yeah, I think that one of the things that I was just looking at the calls that you, the kind of services that you were addressing. And one of the things that is helpful to us as school board members is in advocating for resources or for specific needs our students might have, whether it be legislative or countywide, statewide. And so I think one of the things that would be very beneficial as we continue on gathering information and collecting this kind of reporting is having information for us because you do see students sometimes maybe at their worst points and really figuring, helping us figure out as a district, how do we ensure that we're supporting students at whatever point it may be? And what are the things that we need to build in our infrastructure to make sure that we're addressing those needs? So just the thought of we're collecting the data points of hours that are being worked, but also looking at like serving the whole child and like what does that mean for us that we are not really on the ground looking at those day-to-day things? But what can you tell us to say, you know, this is something that the district should advocate for funding on this or should look at what we're partnering or getting this kind of help for students? So that was just one thing that I wanted to mention. And then I also think that this is, this is really like, we're in a point in time in our history of changing the way that policing was done and looking at our partnerships and looking at this work. So it's going to be, continue to be transformative and evolving. And I think that just that, just acknowledging that what we're doing now might not be how we continue to do it in four more years as we continue to find more things or as training helps, you know, that thing might change. So one of the things that I wanted to mention for us is reviewing the work annually, but also looking at even our IGA. A lot of the things that we put in there are very aspirational in nature because it's what we are hoping that this accomplishes. But once we're, we've been in there doing the work, what have we learned so far? And is this still what we want to have in our agreement? Is this the best thing? Kind of having that eye towards the future of as we're gathering all these data points that it helps us make a stronger, I think, like Mike said, like a guiding document of what roles and responsibilities are.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I just have a question on the data summaries on Slide four. What the trend is, does anyone do trend analysis on the issues that come up from month to month or quarter to quarter or however that may be measured?
I was going to ask, from a school district perspective or from a law enforcement perspective on the data trends?
Both.
Yeah, we do. You know, this is the kind of the first time that we've gotten this level of detail for the data. So we do take that and we will review that and probably look at a yearly trend as opposed to, you know, this is just the first, has the first three months of school. I think we'll want to look at that for the rest of the school year and really dig into that towards, you know, as we go into late spring and summer to prepare for the next school year. I don't know if Lisa or Mike have any add-on to the trending piece?
Oh, you might have taught how to gather the data.
Yeah. So what's interesting and what I appreciate is your comment and also your comment about, you know, this pragmatism about what we're going to do and how we're going to make this happen. Casey and I have agreed that near the end of the school year, we'll meet and we'll go through and we'll look at, yeah, what did we hit? But I think your point is well-taken. I have an analyst that works in the Investigations Unit that we will be able to crunch the data a bit. And we may learn that we need to adjust the focus, which may not be a tenet of the IGA, but it may be maybe just a way we ship, the way our officers do business. So it could be one or both. But yes, we have, it'd be interesting and I don't, we've never done this as a police department where we've had, say, the district looking and analyzing the data and the trend and then us doing it and really look to see where those intersect.
And typically, I was thinking from the police end too, there are specific categories that are captured within the computer systems, if you will, that are analyzed by the analysts. But maybe we add categories or we break them down a little bit more to get a little bit clearer picture about what that actually looks like. Some of this is a bit generic right now. It's kind of what we pulled and put together to summarize. But maybe we do something like that. I don't know.
I mean, there are some easy pickings, like we know 307 or referrals from DHS. Those things have been constant since I did the job. But it also reflects the call type changes in police work in the field in general, not school officers. The calls that are important and the calls that are prevalent today are not at all the calls that were the prevalent and required our attention when I became a police officer in the beginning. So that's a, I think, really would help us hit the sweet spot.
Okay, thank you so much. Yeah, just looking for information on that and looking for continuous improvement. Just look and see if you can address issues before they become bigger issues. So thank you.
I know it's hard to sort of compare the now time to the before time. But did we see a lot of turnover at the beginning of our academic year in our SRO staff? Or is it pretty consistent from last year to this year?
It's been pretty consistent. I had the disadvantage, so I retired and then I came back because I loved it so much. And since I've been back, I think you guys can answer that. We haven't had, when school officers get into the role, we find out pretty quickly if they're going to work in terms of it's going to fulfill them as people and as professionals. And then they typically will get out pretty soon. But once someone solidifies that, and there is like a constant amount of feedback that feels good as a police officer, that then we don't tend to have turnover.
Yeah, I will have to say, you know, just as long as I've been in the district, probably five to seven years ago, we really saw a lot of turnover with retirements in the SROs. And then, you know, we took somebody like Alex O., we took Lisa. So over that course of time, there's been a big turnover from some of those folks that were retired and been there for a long time. And then we do have, you know, new two or three new people every so often, every couple of years maybe at the group.
You know, what's interesting about that observation is good school officers tend, they tend to promote in our department because that's the kind of police department we are. So there'll be that. Either they'll retire or they'll promote, become a sergeant or then a lieutenant. And then we have to put them in a different role.
But the reason I ask is there was some discussion during our formulation of the IGA of how our current resource officers might respond to the, you know, new IGA plan. So it seems like all of them were just on board with the new plan and were just supposed to be that.
Yeah, none of that in effect, any of the...
They are as much as they don't, cops don't want to be told what to do. But beyond that, yeah, they've grown up, got a little mature about it. And now I think they, no, because they realized, and as we socialize this with them, that the job, it's not changing their job, it's actually helping them define their role.
I was wondering across what usually in other districts doing something similar, have you also seen this kind of change and more best practices in your field of this changing? Or are we doing something different?
Well, you're doing something better. Beaverton is similar. And not exactly the same, but similar. You know, what's happened as, gosh, I don't know, in other parts of the country, what we've seen is because districts and police departments weren't brave or committed enough to make it work and do the hard work, they were just junking school programs. And then they were doing away with so many school officer programs all over. And I don't, I believe that's short-sighted and I don't believe it's a good solution.
Yeah, it's a great way to give the community and the families, the kids, the top and everybody to connect because it's a safe place. And so I think that really this district in itself is really ahead from what I can see. I mean, I'll just compare our next door at Beaverton. They're just now in that process where they're having discussions about what do we do? Do we keep them? Do we not keep them? How do we, how do we keep the process going? So the relationships in other districts are not as strong as we have had here in the past. And I think Mike would agree and we've had a really good working relationship. I mean, most of the folks that are up here, I've worked with my last over 15 years when I was a school officer. And so here we all are now, putting together a better program. So really, I think we're ahead of the game, if you ask me.
I can, I can tell you that we worked with you and we still hire you.
You did. I did something right. And you let me go.
Yeah, we said she was great.
No, but I mean, it's true. I think this district is very unique in that. And I think I can speak for Mike in saying that as well. It's always been that way.
I can tell you just the number of districts that have reached out to us to figure out what our process was by which we got to this point. I've shared our information, our process probably five or six times with other districts. And I've shared the IGA and the accompanying document that goes with it. So it's getting some traction, I think, and I do believe we're helping other districts get there. The one thing I tell them that I wish we would have done differently was to, I wish we would have pulled the SROs together as we went through this process to start with. Because without some specific information about what we were doing, what our process looked like, I think they may have felt underappreciated during that process.
Right, if the others done then, then it may have left.
And it may have looked like we were questioning everything we've done. And that certainly wasn't the case. We had a process to go through to build credibility and trust with the community. And we did that. We missed a step. And we've talked to them about that and I think we've remedied that. But that's, that's one thing I wish we would have done different than I've told the other districts about.
Now, because I think at the state level with OSBA and being on that board, there has been some questions asked, like how did you, how did your district do this work? Is there a possibility of presenting or sharing with other districts about it? So I just wanted to ask, like, where are we in this? And for me, I feel like we're still very, like, we did that work but we're still figuring out the outcome of that work and gathering this data, figuring out. And we have some great lessons learned, but we're also of one ratio that we provide our experience and share with others.
We were supposed to present and they got canceled. I think that's one of the biggest challenges. We did the hard work and we spent a lot of time. And then this just being year one to kind of have an implementation is a little out of whack just because of what we're dealing with in schools and COVID-related and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully we can, you know, normalize a little bit as we keep moving forward.
Anybody else have anything they want to add to the discussion?
This is Nancy. I just wanted to say to Casey and Lisa and, wait, who else? Did I miss somebody?
Mike and Francesca.
Thank you. Lisa, Mike and Casey and Francesca. First of all, thank you. When the Black Village voiced its concern back in the end of, I think it was 2019, believe it or not, we didn't think that you all would hear us. And we had concerns about the SRO presence and their engagement. And we generally, really, we had about three goals, we thought. We started out going one way. And if you recall back in time, that was when Portland Public Schools had decided that they were going to pull all their SROs. And then everybody said, well, are we going to do that? And we had a lot of conversation and thankfully reasonable minds prevailed. And we were able to agree that that's not really the answer. The answer is fix the program because we need the program. And you guys heard us. We wanted to make sure that, that HSD heard us. We wanted to make sure that the SROs were removed from the disciplinary portion of what was happening in the school. And then we also wanted to make sure that there was some equity and inclusion training for these officers who are encountering black and brown families that quite frankly, maybe they don't have experience with because of the disproportionate populations that we serve in our community. I'm thankful and I'm proud that HSD was able to hear us and deliver. And let me be specific, the fact that you re-did, retooled and put some detail and some teeth into that IGA was phenomenal. That's what we were looking for. The fact that we helped them understand that not only do we want you to have some equity and inclusion training, let it, we're going to show you what kind of training you need so that you can deal with our staff. You can deal with our children and you can deal with all of the populations that we have. So we were really, really thrilled about that. And I just want to say that we need to just, we heard the parents, we pivot on the program and we continue to make a stronger difference in our school community. And thank you for this effort. I'm asking you to stay on target, stay on the journey for our families and our children. And to Monique's point, let's track the data. The data will tell us a lot. The data is going to tell us a lot. And it sounds like, if I'm hearing Casey right, Casey and Mike, that in fact, they're already tracking it and it's telling things to them. This is when we start getting into the crux of the matter. This is when the rubber meets the road and we start making a difference. And so I'm asking you to stay on this file. And then also, it's like Erica said, we always got to keep the kiddos in the forefront. They, they are the reason why we're all here. And so I'm just saying, thank you. I just wanted to say all of that so that you understand that we were heard and you pivoted and you made a difference. And that means a lot. It means a lot. So thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
All right. Thank you, Commander, for being with us and thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
You can stay if you like, but I don't know that I don't know much.
You know, really thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, the board has been, you know, engaged in equity work for years. And I think Francesca has something to share with us tonight. So you're up again, Francesca.
All right. Thank you. We have slides for this. Is somebody presenting in the room?
Yes.
Okay. And with our work that we're going to do tonight is to provide for you some updates on equity access and engagement. I started off with this quote and it, it goes along a lot with what Erica was saying too. That at the center of equity is the understanding who your kid, who your kids are and how you meet their needs. You are still focused on the outcomes, but the path to get there may not be the same for each one. And I, I say that Pedro was the one who had made this quote because as you're going to see in this presentation, I'm going to give you an overview of our work that we've done so far. But I have the pleasure of also turning it over to Dell, Frank and Audrey, who will be presenting for both middle school and high school. The action and work in play in our buildings because all of us truly believe that the narrative for our students changes when it's, when it's in the classroom. That instruction is at the heart of where our equity work plays out. So I'm halfway through the slides. I'm going to turn it over to Dell and they're going to show you some examples of how it is going in our buildings. We are continuing on, if we can go to the next slide. We're continuing on with our agenda with phase two. If you remember, last year was phase one and we really focused on building a foundation with the professional development that we were providing. We are continuing with phase two this year with the same equity focus and really targeting culturally responsive instruction and instructional practices through discourse. Discourse being different than discussions that we have, discourse is where the action takes place. And still reminding ourselves and focusing on elevating the voices of all through action. And so typically when these slides go out to our different buildings or departments, we set up the agenda and the norms of staying engaged, speaking your truth, experience discomfort, expect and accept non-closure, listening to understand and confidentiality. And those are straight from Singleton's work with courageous conversations. And so if we go to the next slide, our phase two, we kind of started to, to talk about this last time is really holding those pillars of foundations, connections and support. This year, we're really trying to with the team, as well as with all of OSP and anybody who impacts the life of a student, really looking at how, what is the work that we're doing that's going to change and enhance the experience of our students? And so it's through the lens of students, through the lens of staff and through the lens of families. If you notice on this slide too, we have different visuals for you. On the bottom right, that is our pillars of the windmill that with foundation, if we have a solid foundation, if we're connecting with our stakeholders and our students, and if we're building that strong support network, then our windmill is going to spin strongly and, and intensifying and power the equity work that we're doing. When we're talking about distinctions of equity, which is in the lower left hand side, that's through the work of Zaretta Hammond, and it talks about multiculturalism, social justice and culturally responsive education. And so Dell, Frank, Audrey, Lindsay have all been working with administrators and buildings to really work on what does it mean to be culturally responsive? What does it mean to be responsive and building that sense of belonging in your classroom? And that's where social emotional learning becomes a lever for equity. They work hand in hand with each other. Because if you're knowing your students by name, strength and need, then you're taking action on that information that you do have. And so that's when the equity work truly starts to power itself. If we can go to the next slide, what I did right here was highlight just some things we're doing with foundations, connections and support. And I'll stop talking at you and just give me about two more minutes. We are not only working on this within our school buildings, we are also working on it within each of our departments. So to speak about the departments, each department has made a goal, an equity goal. And I have a team of leaders who go and if I can't make it, they do. And they meet to talk about what's their plan and how can they meet that goal based on what they intended at the beginning of the year. So we meet with transportation and, and everybody's doing a little bit of spin on their thing. Transportation is actually, they, they do it asynchronously, a part of it. And then they come in for what we call Todd Talks and he's one of the people who are leading it. And they just come in and they, they talk about whatever the concept is that they're learning about or that they've covered in a video or that they've gone over in a, in a slide. And they really dig into that discourse. I was able to attend the one in, it was early December. And they plan these during the day so that if they're on a, the bus drivers are on a route or they've, they've already dropped their kids off and it's in between, they can phone in then from their phone. And we had well over a hundred bus drivers who during their time optionally came in to have discourse. And so that to me says, we're doing something to change the experience of our students because they're wanting to know what can I do in the position that I'm in to help support the equity work we're doing in the district? So that their changed and lived experience is different than the narrative that we can predict. We are releasing PD four times a quarter and the first half of it, four times, once every quarter. So there's four sessions. And the PD is tailored for either departments or tailored either for school buildings, but they cover the same concepts. So we're on quarter two PD right now. I go out and I meet and then I, I'm support Audrey, Dell and Frank. And looped a minute, if there's anything that I'm noticing when I have my short, quick visits. We are working with climate and culture and how that sense of belonging when you walk into a building is foundational and that is where equity shows up. We've also continued with our connections with our PACs. We're fine tuning our family engagement page on the district website and coming up with protocols for communication so that we ensure that whatever we're putting out there for family engagement, so that we are getting the stakeholder voice of all of our families, not just the traditional ones that show up for meetings, but for all. And so we've streamlined a couple of protocols just in the last month, working with Beth and her team and Olga Acuna and her team to really make sure that what we're putting out on our website is matching up with what we're saying. We're working with our student groups such as Black Student Union, Latina Youth Program or the LIP, Chicas API, our leadership groups. We've been able to go out and do actually some restorative circles at some of our high schools. We're supporting through an internal website that is just about to go live for our staff that will have vignettes on different things that we've talked about. Like maybe it's on bias and there'll be different ways that teachers, staff can access it at a different time. So maybe they just want to know more about bias and they'll, on the sheet, it's going to not only be like something you can read, something you can watch, something you can do. They'll have different ways that they can access different key elements and topics that they want to further explore. And so all of this, whether they're in the department, whether you're in a department, and I know I just highlighted transportation, but I could say the same for business office. For tech services are rocking it, HR, they each have their own little, little way that they're doing it that makes it a little more special for them and targeted for them. But it's providing them what they need in the moment for the people and the positions that they are working in. And then also for our schools, working with our building administrators is affording us that opportunity to solidify the culture of care that we are trying to build. And so I'm going to turn it over right now and Dell's going to speak of how, when we talk about that lived experience for students, that student experience and changing that narrative. One thing we know about equity, when it's not equity work, we can predict it. When it's equity work, when you're actually doing it, it's a little bit more predictive, unpredictable. And so how are we changing that student experience? Dell's going to speak with it, speak about it. And then I'm going to come back at the very end and just explain a couple legislation that have come out in the last couple of months. So over to you, Dell.
Thank you, Fran. So on the next slide, what you will see is sort of the eight competencies for culturally responsive teaching, which has kind of been the support structure that we have been working with our principals and our teachers in order to make more culturally relevant instruction in our buildings. This is kind of based on Zaretta Hammond, Zaretta Hammond's work with the distinctions of equity and sort of that, that one column around bringing culturally responsive teaching practices within every single lesson. So in order to kind of start this work, if you go to the next slide, we really want to make sure our principals are equipped to lead this change in their buildings. And so we really have throughout our district, had the focus on students at the center and then teachers serve our students, our principals are there to support and assist in the improvement in the classroom experience. And then we, as a district team, support that work within the schools. So we started off working with our principals in August and we looked at the elements of high quality instruction. So as you know, we use the five dimensions of teaching and learning as a framework for quality instruction, but it also is the tool we use for our evaluation. And sometimes I think we have people that think we do equity and then we do instruction. And equity has to be in our instruction. The only way we actually improve outcomes for students is if we make sure that it is showing up in their lived experience, not only through the welcoming environment and wraparound services, but in the, the way that they are learning and meeting their needs. We talk about, you know, the concept of windows and mirrors in instruction as kind of a baseline. We want to see ourselves and what we're learning and how we're learning. And we also want to see others and other cultures and other ways of learning. So that's kind of a baseline, but there's so many other ways to come at high quality instruction. So we spent time in August, having our principals really dig into what is the language in the five dimensions and where do the components show up already in our evaluation tool? As well in what we have already identified as high quality teaching. And so thankfully it's all there, which is great. So that allows for some accountability, it allows for a different level of conversation and it allows for some focus. So then we spent some time working with our principals around the utilizing of data. So how do you gather classroom data to show what's happening, happening in a classroom? In order to have database conversations, it's exactly what Monique and Nancy were talking about. We want to track data. And some of that data is quantitative data, how many students are on task? How many students are passing their course? How many students are attending? How many students are choosing to take certain courses? But it's also qualitative data. So it's really asking students, when principals are in classrooms? What are you learning? How is this working? And as counselors and administrators are talking to students about why they choose certain courses or how their needs are being met, all that data helps inform how we're doing in terms of improving our instruction. Then we started working with our principals around what we affectionately call, I think Audrey coined this, our clear is kind conversations. We used to say difficult, how to have difficult conversations. But they, they don't have to be difficult. They just need to be clear. And in that clear clarity is a form of kindness because we assume and know that every single person in our system is working hard to do the best they can for students. So if we're not meeting that goal, how do we have database clear and kind conversations to help move us all towards that goal? You know, it's a great responsibility to be able to speak and identify issues of concern that might be happening in a classroom and support a teacher to improve their practice to meet all student needs. So that's, that's a strategy and a skill that we continue to focus on as Frank, Audrey and Lindsay are out there as level directors, supporting principals. This is something that they do with principals when they go out and do their one-on-one visits. They go into classrooms, they talk about what kind of database feedback they're giving teachers. They talk about the type of conversations that they're having with teachers and they role play in practice. And so being good at those clear and clear is kind conversations is really imperative. And then finally, we continue to build skill for instructional improvement so that data drives holes in terms of teacher skill, in terms of principals' questions about how to improve instruction. And so we continue to look at those eight components for culturally responsive instruction. I'm looking at things including assessments, how PLCs talk about improving instruction, how we use technology to differentiate and meet student needs. All of these different tools that we have at our disposal to help do better by our kids. So I'm going to hand it off to Frank and then Audrey, who will talk specifically about what that looks like at high school, middle school and elementary this year.
Thanks, Dell.
Thanks Dale. Um, so at the high school level, uh, uh, our students are experienced in learning and our responsibility with our high school teachers is to, uh, make sure that they are instructing in ways that are culturally responsive and, um, understanding student experience. Um, what that looks like and what we really are encouraging, uh, our high school teachers to do is to, uh, make sure that the students are able to, uh, see at their own life experiences in the courses and then the curriculum and in the instruction. Um, and the professional development that goes towards teachers and understanding how to do that is around, um, the perspective of a high school teacher. I'm a chemistry teacher. I don't understand how to do this. I teach chemistry or I teach math. And, um, part of that is, is back to what Dale was talking about, the five D rubric and understanding that how we organize our instruction can support all learners through engagement, interact, student interaction strategies, structured interaction, uh, since setting up classrooms so that students are able to learn from each other and partner with each other in learning and exploring, offering choice when possible and learning opportunities. Offering choice and options for students to demonstrate their learning in different ways. A test isn't always the only way that a student has to or can demonstrate their, uh, knowledge in an area. All of these different modalities and opening up the curriculum from one standard model becomes culture responsive teaching in, in, in action. Uh, associate emotional learning at, as a lever for equity at the high school, I think really focuses on, um, making sure that our staff are trauma informed and understanding, um, the students' experiences. Um, especially after COVID, our students have had, as you, I'm sure are aware, uh, some, some very challenging traumatic experiences throughout COVID and we are seeing the effects of that. All of our high schools also have student-based, school-based equity teams and they work with Fran and her team uh, to help inform their PD and our principals and, uh, instructional coaches deliver the quarterly equity professional developments. Um, they're very well received at our high schools and our, our high school teachers are, are asking for, uh, more of that. Uh, many and all of our schools have, uh, student clubs, uh, affinity group clubs, uh, student unions. Um, and those are opportunities for student leadership and student voice. And I know that our principals, uh, and our assistant principals spend time, uh, meeting with those student clubs to, uh, make sure that they are included and, uh, in decision-making and informing leadership of the school. So, uh, that being said, um, the other thing I think that, uh, back to instructional practices that I would point out is our dual language programs, as you know, are expanding, uh, this year and have expanded into, uh, Century Liberty in Glencoe. And they will continue to, uh, add, of course, offerings over the next couple of years. Um, and though they are off to a good start, which is also creating lots of opportunities for, uh, staff to, uh, learn and experience, uh, students in a different way. Uh, with that, I'll kick it over to Audrey.
Excited. Thank you. Um, also feel that I need to say clear is kind was coined by Brene Brown, not Audrey Neville. So let's not connect those two together. Brene is way, way cooler than I am. Um, so in middle school, I just wanted to talk about a couple of things there. I really think, um, anchoring back, we've talked about name, strength and need, um, for the last couple of years in our district. And I think that is just such the important work that we are doing, particularly coming back from 18 months of a pandemic and really truly getting to know our students, um, by their name, by their strength and by their need. And I think, um, that is the equity work we need to do because we need to meet kids where they're at and move them forward. And at the middle school level, it has really been about getting to know kids, making that connection. Um, really, um, trying to get them engaged and back into school in a meaningful way despite challenges that are coming at us left and right from outside of the school environment. So, um, just really focused on differentiation strategies at the middle school level, um, thinking about ways to scaffold for kids. And again, doing a lot of similar things that Frank talked about with the high school is doing around being culturally responsive and supporting students. Dual language has, um, been offered at all four of our middle schools this year, which has been really exciting as well as Avid Excel. And one of the greatest things that we've been able to do at the middle school is a seven period day through SIA funding, which has allowed electives for every single one of our students. And one of the coolest electives in a partnership with HSF has been our career action labs. And, um, if you ever want to talk about career action labs or go visit, I'm happy to take you to them. It's an opportunity for our students where they're just experiencing different, um, careers that are out there. And I call it an appetizer course. It's been amazing for our students and, um, many of them say it's one of their favorite classes. Um, at the middle school level, we do advisory lessons four days a week and we really do respond to their needs. Um, as we see things come up around suicide prevention, um, wellness. Um, we've seen some things around cyber bullying and internet safety and those types of things that have been really just, um, amplified as we've returned to school. So we really work through those things through advisory. Um, and we've been using a curriculum called Character Strong that helps support those lessons too, so that we're not left to try to develop them all on our own. Um, the other piece that we've added is, um, a wellness counselor that is full-time at our four middle schools. And that has been really great to have opportunities for students to process things, work through things. Um, just have a little bit more time to debrief, have discussions, work through some of the things that they're feeling around middle school. We've seen a large increase in anxiety. So we've really been working on strategies to support students with that as they have returned to school. So that's kind of what we're doing at middle school and we can pop to elementary. So the next slide please. Um, very similar things too here, um, name, strength and need and engagement, um, being a key component of that. Um, one of the things that we've also increased is, um, our offerings of Spanish Lit in, um, some of our elementary schools. We have Avid at four of our schools. We are doing a greater than project at, um, Lincoln Street. It's a partnership that has been just phenomenal for them and we had hoped to get it off and running last year, but this year it's been able to get, um, get going quite a bit more. Um, we have renewed our partnership with Right Brain. That was challenging also, um, when we were in distance learning. And so being able to bring those strategies back into the classroom that again, um, have kids thinking at, uh, about school in a different way and having opportunities that, um, go about learning in a different way sometimes as well. Morning meetings are an integral part of our elementary experience. Um, we have wellness rooms and we've been teaching, um, students regulation strategies um, that are culturally appropriate and allowing them to just have those moments where, um, learning those strategies to remain in the classroom, to breathe, to take it, um, you know, we have dots and squeezy's at elementary school, just different strategies that allow students to remain in the classroom. Um, and utilizing, um, movement breaks. Um, you may have seen some of our pathways in some of our schools, if you've been able to pop into some of them where they just can have opportunities to get the wiggles out because it's just been, um, again, a, a different, um, experience from last year and getting kids used to being back in school every day, all day. Um, Sanford Harmony and Second Steps are the curriculums that we use typically for our morning meetings and, um, for strategies around, um, social and emotional learning and, um, zones of regulation. May, if you have elementary students, you may be hearing those when you come home. If they're in the blue zone, the red zone, the green zone. Sometimes my daughter lets me know she's in the red zone. It's really great. Um, and I know exactly what that means. So, um, those, just reteaching those because allowing kids to express how they're feeling is so important, but giving them the tools to do so is so important as we return back to school. So just a couple of the things there.
All right. Thank you guys. Um, okay. So just a couple of things to have on your radar. You'll, you would have seen in the packet that Rose sent out. In the past, when we had approved, um, when we had talked about every student belongs, it was called all students belong. And they changed the wording on it to be every student belongs. And so they attached that in here. Um, there have been a couple of edits, but nothing, um, too dramatic with every student belongs. But that link, um, which I'm happy to share with you guys, um, will give you the most up to date on Senate Bill two, seven, eight, nine. Sorry, I'm trying to clear my throat. The new one that just passed in the last legis- um, legislation. Um, they had a winter session is the Equity Advisory Council, which is House Bill seven, three, two. And with the Equity Advisory Council, the state is asking, um, schools to have an advisory council that is made up of various stakeholders. We have already begun the work, um, and as time goes on, we, we will of course bring it up with you to have further discussions about what the process is going to be. But what it's really asking, um, all school districts to do in Oregon is to have an advisory council that helps school boards and helps, um, superintendents in the work that we're doing, um, as we're moving our work forward. So more to come on that. Like I said, that just passed in December. Um, and we will get more information to you at an upcoming school board meeting. Um, so those are the two for you and that's the end of the presentation. Are there any questions? And hopefully I can clear my throat.
Hey guys, this is Nancy. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Francesca. That is an incredible body of work in a pandemic. Go girl, go. Seriously, that is a lot of work to do. And this is not easy and, and, and with the stress and the emotional, um, toll on both the, the students, their families, the teachers. Um, just thank you for extending grace and mercy to the teachers as well. And whatever we can do to intertwine grace and mercy for the teachers as they're embracing something that they've never had to before. It would be nice to think that everybody did this instinctively, but they don't. And we recognize that. So really, really to, to you Dale, everybody, thank you. Because I'm sorry, I've never seen this kind of level of effort in a, in a group that exposes in a community like the one that we have. So I'm really, really appreciative. I just wanted to say thank you. It's a lot of work. You and I both know that it's not even really begun, but we'll get there. We'll get there. Great job.
Thank you Nancy. And it is a team. I'm, that's why I was so happy that Dale, Frank, Audrey and Lindsay were able to join in this.
Oh, sorry, Audrey too.
Yeah.
And what else? Have any questions?
All right. I, I also just wanted to echo, uh, Nancy's sentiments and express gratitude and just really for the, um, covering all the angles and looking at things from the elementary, you know, um, middle school and high school level, our staff, our programs. And like you said, Fran, like just the all encompassing, like when we think about equity, it touches everything. And we think about transportation and business and sometimes those topics, because our focus is on education, you know, they're not, um, covered, but it's really everything that we do as an organization. So I just want to thank you for keeping that perspective of our whole, um, agency and what, what we all do and how do we put this work in everything. So again, thanks to the whole team for all your effort and, um, for sharing tonight.
Yes. Thank you for the update. Yes. Thanks everybody for all the work you put into this and, and for continuing to do those efforts. All right. Uh, our next, uh, item, uh, yeah, this is something that I brought up a few meetings ago. And, uh, I think it's so important that we continue. I, I want to thank former Chair Lopez for just getting it started when you did it that, uh, but, but I think a few meetings ago, I recognized that we didn't really have a conversation about it as a board. Uh, and maybe this is just something we feel as the board chair has latitude in or whatever, whatever we decide, we decide. But there's a, there's a draft of a land acknowledgement that we have vetted through, uh, members of our Native American pack in your packet. And if you have any input or feedback on it, I would love to hear it. All right. Let me give you, uh, just in case you haven't had a chance to freshen memory, I'll let you have a chance to look at it.
I think we had settled on the process before running that path then. So I'm really comfortable with what we arrived.
Yeah, uh, it was a good process too. Yeah. Yes. I, I'm glad to have gone through it now. Especially since I will be reading it as a greater wake up. So. All right. So, uh, you can look forward to that going forward in our regular sessions. Uh, the next item is Dale with a graduation progress update, or probably more than Dale, but I think Dale picks us off.
Yes. Uh, Frank and I wanted to bring a, um, timely topic to you tonight, just about, um, graduation progress. Um, sometime at the end of January, you will get to see our, um, 2021 graduation results. They are currently embargoed, so I'm not, um, able to share them, but the timing is always awkward. And so, uh, we will probably be sending them out to you in a board update. But in the meantime, I just wanted to give you a little bit of understanding about what we are doing in relation to our graduation, um, rates and the work that's going on in the schools. So, um, the first slide or slide number two, um, as you will recall, in, uh, 2020, we saw the highest graduation rates we'd seen in our district. Um, we were at eighty seven point zero seven, um, across our district for a on-time four-year graduation rate or traditional four-year graduation rate. Um, and then for completer rate, it was ninety point one five and a five-year cohort graduation rate from the year before at an unprecedented ninety two point seven seven. Um, basically what that means is the graduating class from 2019. If, if whoever's, um, negotiating the slides, if you could get those up, that would be great. Slide two.
We also do them in our, in our, we do have access to them in our.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. Yeah.
You can call them up individually again.
Excellent. So, um, an unprecedented ninety two point seven seven percent of our students is from 2019 cohort were able to get a diploma, graduate in some way. Um, we have long said that, um, sometimes that four-year timeline doesn't work for all kids. Um, it's okay if it takes a little bit longer. Um, but we really want all of our students to be career and college ready. And we believe that, um, having a high school diploma is one of those indicators. And so we're very, very proud of our 2020 graduation rates. And, um, as you will probably, um, hopefully recall, back in, um, 2015, five years prior, we are at eighty percent. And so I just huge kudos to our system, our principal leadership, our teachers, the systems of support we put in place, our graduation coaches, our counselors. It's just such a huge lift, um, in order to make sure that we are focused on all kids' career and college ready, um, graduating. So exciting, exciting news. As the grad rates come out, you can probably predict, predict we will see a little bit of a slip for that on-time four-year graduation rate. Again, that information is embargoed, um, so can't share it with you, but it will be coming to you soon. And what we wanted to do tonight is to make sure you understood, um, the efforts that are, uh, being conducted throughout our district in order to support students who, um, maybe didn't hit that four-year on-time graduation rate. Um, but we're still supporting and making sure that they can meet that within five-year graduation, um, rate. And we also wanted to, um, talk to you a little bit about some other factors that are at play as we start looking ahead for the next couple of years. So if you go to the next slide. So our district has been really working on the ninth grade on-track, um, work for quite a few years. And you will recall that we saw steadily improvement. Um, Frank, uh, as he came from Stanford Children is deeply knowledgeable and has coached many, many districts on this ninth grade on-track work. So one of the other great reasons I'm excited to have him. Um, but we had a, uh, eight percent off-track rate in 2022 and that is a predictor of that four-year graduation rate. So we're seeing steady progress, um, over time, which we're really excited about. Again, that systems, um, supporting our kids in success in ninth grade. So as we look at our current students, if you'll advance aside, we are really looking at the impact, the impact of, um, COVID and our need to have comprehensive distance learning and, um, hybrid instruction over the last couple of years. So we'll continue to look at our on-track rate. Um, we are of course focusing on core content. And when you look at passing rates of students over the last couple of years, um, you will see. you will see that core content was more successful than students than our CTE and elective courses. And when you really think about that, kind of makes sense. Those are classes where you're really getting your hands on things, whether that's a 3D printer or it's culinary arts. That was harder for students to stay engaged. And so we're seeing a little bit of lag in terms of our students really diving into some of those CTE pathways. We continue to work on social emotional development and social emotional learning because we know that the impact of COVID has been very big on our students. And we want to make sure that it's not just about passing classes, but it's about being a student that moves on outside of high school, being a career and college ready. And that also includes other skill sets. So specifically, as we look through at our students, we just wanted to kind of highlight some of the nuances that we're seeing here as we think about the impact. So our current seniors had their junior year in distance learning hybrid, and they had past plans for the second half of 10th grade. Again, this is the group that we were really proud of how many were on track as ninth graders. Many of them, their sophomore year, as they had past plans, we did have some incomplete past past plans. But the junior year is really the year that a lot of our seniors dive into those CTE courses and elective courses. And again, that was very difficult. So we have thirty two credit opportunities for our students, and that's been a real bonus for us in this situation, as some students did not pass elective courses. So as they're back in brick and mortar schools this year, we're seeing our seniors engaging, but maybe struggling a little bit with that post-graduation career and college readiness planning. So that's kind of a big focus for our seniors. Our juniors tend to be the ones that we actually are most concerned about at this point. They didn't have a complete ninth grade year. And again, that's a huge indicator for graduation. And then their sophomore year, they had distance learning hybrids, so that getting involved in things, experiencing some of those CT and elective courses that might lead you to a CTE or elective path didn't really happen. And so that that those students are ones that we have a special eye on. Our current sophomores spent their freshman year in distance learning hybrid. Some of them were able to come back in the spring. The end of their eighth grade year was distance learning past past plans. These students are really ones that we're trying to engage in some of those elective CTE courses, make sure that any core courses that they didn't pass in their freshman year, that we're kind of shoring that up, making sure that we're on track for graduation. And then our current freshmen spent most of middle school mostly online. So in terms of those skills for organization, for advocacy, for really understanding self, all those developmental milestones that you might do in middle school, we're kind of seeing some of those needs come into the freshman year. And so each year has its own unique challenges that as we think about graduation rates and making sure that our students are career and college ready, that Frank and the administrators at the schools are problem solving.
So Adele alluded to the performance in ninth grade of our current juniors, which is the class twenty three, and our current sophomores of the class of twenty four. And as you can see, a larger percentage of those students ended their freshman year on track. This also is using the HSD metric, which requires passing language arts and math as part of those six credits earned during the ninth grade year, which is a quarter of the way to graduation. So contrasting that with with the stellar, really stellar stellar performance of of less than ten percent off track, we have a little work to do. The good news is is that our system knows how to do it. So with, given the time that we have for, as Dale mentioned, our current juniors and sophomores, we are hopeful that we will be able to make up some of those lost credits over the next two years. Next slide, please. So a lot of things going on this year to to work with students who are potentially off track, as well as all of our students, specifically our off track students. And we listed a couple of those things here, the Pathway Center, which I'll let Dale talk about in a moment, can talk about where that work is, give you a status update on that. In our brick and mortar schools, we are working on creating many different options for students to earn credit. As Dale said, our system offers thirty two credit opportunities in four years, and only twenty eight are needed. So students, twenty four are needed, sorry. So students have a little bit of extra opportunity to earn credit. They could do that through retaking a course or summer school for where credit recovery could happen. Also, our teachers are working individually with students to develop past plans to continue and finish off incomplete learning. Credit by proficiency is another way. So part of what we are using, the three non-student days that the board gave us is to organize and grade those past plans and also to figure out which courses exactly students need to for graduation, and then develop plans individually with all of those students or with a particular course. Algebra one, chemistry, physics tend to be some of the higher higher failed courses that we need to now remediate. So we are working on organizing our time around that. Evening programming, ninth grade reboot, our two programs are going to be hopefully start while evening programming and the ninth grade program reboot at the Oak Street campus. The ninth grade reboot is going to take a small number of target selected students from each of our campus, and they're going to be invited to attend second semester at the Oak Street campus. This is a program that HSD started pre-COVID and was put on pause, and we're going to try and restart it. And so those students are going to be who have struggled with that ninth grade transition and earning credit are going to have an opportunity to have a smaller learning environment at the Oak Street campus with our teachers there to engage in earning credit and also doing some self exploration and getting some skills related to to being successful on the on the comprehensive campuses. And then have the opportunity to return as sophomores to their comprehensive campus. The schools right now are in the process of inviting students. This is going to be an invite by invitation program for those students that we believe would be served well by it. Evening programming, we have a couple of positions posted now at the Oak Street campus to be able to extend programming and learning opportunities for students into the late afternoon, early evening, particularly for those students who may be working all day or part of their day. Currently, those positions are posted, but with our challenges around hiring, we have not yet been able to fill those. In our comprehensive campuses, we will be going in second during second semester, starting we'll be expanding our advisory program to from two days to four days with the goal of adding support for students to be able to meet with individual teachers or to receive additional help through tutoring or to make up missing assignments or to engage in some extra additional study time. That will also help our students stay caught up with this year's work so that they don't fall further behind, as well as possibly making up additional credit. And looking down the road, we're in the early stages of beginning a math adoption process. Becky King Smith is working on that. And the state is moving to a two plus one scope and sequence where there'd be two required courses and then some options for that third year of math, which we think will also help students. I'll kick it back to Dale for the Pathway Center partnership piece.
Excellent. Thank you. So as you know, Pathway Center opens the first part of February. We will start bringing in our early college program, GED program, and opening up our Paxton Patterson Career Exploration Area and start pulling in programs. We have great partnerships, wonderful internships, PCC, Oregon Youth Core Program, Job Core. We just have great partners that I'm excited to be able to connect kids with. And I also want to highlight as we end this with kind of a fun story. So as you know, in our district, we really believe that we are all in support of our kids K twelve in their trajectory towards graduation and career and college ready. And one of the things that we do is that we are sending out, like we've done in the past, kind of that list of ten day drops or list of students who did not finish on time and are perhaps needing a little bit of support. And as I went through that list about right for holiday break, I saw a student that I've known since she was a kindergartner and she was on that list. And I gave her a call and I said, hey, hi. So see, you're on the list, not quite graduated, just want to see what kind of support I can offer you. And she said, I know, Ms. Bitter, I'm working on it. I've already got a plan. I'm working with my counselor. And I said, okay, that's great. I'm so proud of you. Good job. What help can I? Can I offer you? And she said, nothing, I've got it. I'm doing it. I just, you know, it was a bad year and some other things went on. She kind of explained some things. And I said, well, I'm just going to keep calling you every month to cheer for you. And she was like, okay, that sounds great. And I know what that means. So I think it's that kind of of support. And I know there's many of us throughout the district that we we know our kids and know our families. And I think it allows us to continue to support and outreach to them and try to find whatever pathway might work for them in order to help them graduate our system and go off to great college and careers. So again, your data will come out at the end of the month. We will send it in a board update when it's released. I don't have that exact date yet, but it usually is somewhere around the twenty fifth. So you can look for it. Thank you.
Do you guys have questions? Looks like Nancy has her hand raised.
Wonderful presentation and thank you, even though it includes embargoed information. I love you, Dale, for saying that. That is so funny. I was thinking, as you were talking, and I was thinking that there is some serious communication work that has to be done with parents and between parents and kids. And and I I think that's where we oftentimes we fall short. And then if you over overimpose the overlay of COVID and everything pandemic and all of that, I I feel like communication, communication, sorry, Beth, but communication is the only way we're going to get through this. And so I just wanted to bring that up. I'm not presuming that you haven't done anything and presuming that you've done everything. I just wanted to bring that up to make sure that because the data you just gave right now is the data that needs to be shared with the community. So the community understands that, hey, look, the numbers are down. We're not going to be at ninety two and ninety three percent like we like we were. We were on a good trajectory. The world happens, crap happens, and then we got to get into it again. And so I just want to gently urge everybody to communicate, communicate, communicate with these parents so that they understand that there is a chance for redemption before you fall off the wheel, right? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Monique, you have a question or a comment?
I have a question. Yes. Dale, could you explain a little bit more about the past past plan? What what exactly is that or what's entailed in that?
Yeah, I could say I could do that one. So for students who last year participated in coursework, but maybe did not complete enough coursework to demonstrate proficiency to earn a letter grade, they were given an incomplete or possibly an N indicating that there was no evidence of their participation in the class. So those are not Fs. Those indicate that the student did, and in the case of the incomplete, did learn some things, did demonstrate some proficiency in some of the areas of the course, but just not enough. So the the past plan is a plan that's created by the teachers in that content area to bridge that learning to enable that student to earn a letter grade, a passing grade.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, you have a question?
Okay, sorry. It was a problem for the past plans. So I know that a lot of teachers right now are overloaded with work and we have like one of those off days for students this Friday, I believe. But are we ensuring that like for some teachers that have, some teachers have like a hundred students, like over a hundred students that we're not give like overloading them as well with these past plans? Because are they writing individual past plans for every student?
Not necessarily. And I think the numbers are are a little bit lower than than a hundred per teacher. In fact, I know they are. But what I will tell you is that like for a particular course, let's say it's Algebra One, the teachers can get together and look at what units or what areas were problematic for the majority for the majority of students who need that work and then develop that past plan. So yes, that's a big part of the work they'll be doing. They'll be looking at on on this Friday and the other days as well.
I have a couple, if we don't have anything else online or.
The only question that I had was on the ninth, the ninth grade reboot, the invite only program. Is that going to be starting? Like, is there a natural break where students will be pulled and then left? Or is it? Is it for next year? I wasn't really sure of what that.
Sure. I'm sorry not to be clear. It's starting the second week of second semester. So beginning of February, February tenth, I believe.
And I'm just also really excited that our pathway program or Pathway Center is opening and having just an additional resource or place for students to go. That's just amazing for us, especially during the pandemic. This is great. So thank you, everyone, for that, pushing that through.
With TMI first question. So that that when we the data may be embargoed, and just to clarify, we did not share any embargoed data. But you know, the students that did not complete their graduation requirements. And will we be using, you know, the Pathway Center to sort of get them across that five year plan? That's one of the one of the tools that we have at our disposal?
Yes, it's one of the tools. We've also part of the process in compiling the the graduation data is we have a validation window in November where we're able to look at preview the preliminary data. And that also gives us information about which students did not complete all the requirements. So the schools themselves are also happening, also reaching out as well as our staff at the Oak Street campus. Many students, some students have moved away, others are working full time. A few have re-enrolled, and then they would count in that fifth year cohort if they're able to complete their work. So multiple ways with the Pathway Center being one of them.
Monique, looks like you have a follow up question?
I do. Just real quick on the past plan. So is this something new that has been developed because of COVID? Or is this a new because of the on track program? Or is this temporary? Is this permanent?
It was originally, I can't speak to pre-COVID. I know that it was part of our work during distance learning and COVID from the as from the guidance from the Oregon Department of Education. So we are still in that time now of completing those path plans so that students can earn those credits. Moving forward, we are, we have switched some of our grading processes to give students opportunities this year to earn credit. If they earn an incomplete, similarly, as I mentioned for last year, if their their learning wasn't complete, then they can meet with their teacher and work towards earning a letter grade, even if the semester is over. So that's part of what we're going to use some of that four days of advisory access time for, so those students can get that extra help, figure out what they're missing to then turn what would become an F into a letter grade.
And I'll provide some history. I've now discovered that's my role, being the old lady who provides history. Historically, what we've done is this is where academic options teachers have partnered with students and other teachers. So sometimes we have students who may have had a medical emergency and missed three or four weeks of school or some students who just didn't didn't engage in the class or were not able to be successful in the class. So as we have worked with our options teachers, the teacher might work with the student and the teacher and say, oh, this student was on track, but. oh, this student was on track, but he or she or they had a medical emergency, they were out for three weeks. So these are the learnings that they need to do and, and they'll work in the options course to kind of complete those. And then the options teacher is working with the teacher to ensure that the student can show proficiency on the standards and then earn the grade. And it's also been something where a student perhaps just didn't pass Algebra I and then comes into the, the options class and the student says, I, I just want to pass. I just, I want to pass, I'm in geometry, I love it, I'm doing great, but I just got to get this pass in algebra. And so the options teacher would work with that student in order to just show the minimum proficiency on the, on the standards in order to pass for a grade. So it's something that we've done, but not on such a large scale. The PASS Plans really came out of when we went to comprehensive distance learning in the first year in, in 2019. We were basically told that students, if they were passing at that time that we closed school at the high school level, then they passed the class. So students who were not yet showing proficiency up to that point, we created PASS Plans in order for them to pass. And that terminology is just kind of continued as we look towards what occurred last year in terms of whether or not students were able to engage and show proficiency on the standards.
Okay, thank you so much, both of you.
You, you had mentioned during full CDL that we, you know, often had times administering the curriculum for some of our CTE programs and that may have led to less of an interest in those programs. So being back in buildings, have we seen the current junior class find renewed interest in those programs? Or do we still need to figure out how to, you know, re-engage people with those programs?
I think the initial read on that is those students are enrolled in those classes, they forecasted into them. I'm happy to say that we were able to find, hire a welding teacher to, to continue the welding program at Glencoe. We have students participating in the aviation program, which is also new this year. And they're using, accessing that through the shuttle. So I think the interest is still really strong. The students, I think our counselors and our, through our, our schools are really focused on, how do we make sure that kids really start to understand the options that they have? And that really is going to get, I think, reemphasized in forecasting this year. One of the other things that we were able to do with SIA funds, I believe, at the high schools was add a fifth counselor at each high school who's specifically focused on college and career pathways and working with the eighth graders at their feeder middle school. So they spend one day a week at the feeder middle school, working with the eighth grade team and will be part of those students forecasting in the ninth grade. And then the Career Action Lab work at the middle schools, I think, also is a work towards continuing that strong pathway focus.
Thanks. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? I will, I will share that, that statement hit me like a ton of bricks. That most of our freshmen, that our freshmen spent most of their middle school career. It's obvious, of course, but it just, seeing it phrased that way was very powerful. I mean, the, the students who are freshmen now left Evergreen Middle School for spring break and when they returned to school on a regular basis, they went to Glencoe. I, I can't even imagine. Yeah, how that, how you process that or deal with it. And, and frankly, I, I feel similar about the people who were, who went home, who left Tobias Elementary for sixth grade and came back to eighth grade of Brown Middle School. The, those trends, we know the middle school transition is always tough. And to disrupt it like this, I just, thank you for the work you guys are doing to keep our students on track. And it just, it feels like a vague lift, which I guess it is. Anybody else? All right, thank you, guys. I guess our, basically our last item is just administrative regulations. Reminder that ARs are something we want to be informed about and be aware of. They are in your pocket, but they're not something that requires board approval. So any questions, you can submit questions or comments to Mike or, you know, ask them here if you'd like, whatever. But putting them in here means they're on review, is that about right?
There's, there's.
There's no review.
There's no review.
I'm going to just inform. Yeah, just letting us know that these, these AR changes will happen to make us compliant with the new regulations and laws and whatnot.
Correct.
Any questions? All right, we're only about 50 minutes over, so. Board time, let's start with the students. Kaylee, how about, was I, anything I can add this evening?
Can you repeat what you just said?
Sorry?
She didn't hear your question.
Do you have anything, we are at board time, so it's your time to say whatever you'd like. Do you have anything you'd like to add for us this evening?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that I was able to pop in and watch a couple of presentations. I, as always, I love Francesca's. Hers are so, they're really nice, I really like them. I personally was part of the student committee planning for the presentation and I loved seeing all the work and I have been part of all the work that they're doing. I am a huge advocate for the dual-language program. I love that program and I'm so glad to hear that. It is expanding even more because ever since I was in elementary school, I knew that I was very lucky and it made me feel a lot more comfortable learning in both English and Spanish. And I say this all the time, but being a dual-language student, you build a bond with the rest of the students, but it's not a friendship, it's more of a family. And I know that when we started getting separated from them in sophomore year of high school, it made me feel homesick being away from those students because I grew up with those students and, and they are my family. So it makes me very happy to hear that it, it's expanding. Because I know that there's going to be so many more students who feel that, that comfort and that joy. And I just, I really liked all presentations today, especially also I liked Dale's and I liked learning about, you know, how we, how we were the best, we were the best class, class of 2022. But I, I really liked it.
Thank you. Michelle, would you like to go next?
Sure, I can go next. So first, I want to say like, I think it's, I think to me, in my, my opinion, that it's really impressive how our school district has navigated the whole COVID situation, like discussions about equity and also like the graduation rate and graduation supports. I know that like, we, we have a lot of work to do and we have a long road ahead, but we are more ahead than a lot of other districts. And I think that, given the circumstances that we are in right now, I think that we're doing a lot. And it's actually quite impressive. I think that, especially to me, one thing that mattered the most was like the equity work. I'm not sure if I've said this before, but, so I've been like talking to and contacting affinity groups across the district and we've been trying to unite and we've been regularly meeting with different student groups around the district, discuss, discussing like questions, concerns and just how we feel being in the Hillsborough School District. And I think that, you know, the, a lot of the equity work that we're doing in the district is like impressive, in my opinion. And I think that I would like to continue seeing our district continue at that direction. And then I think that like for the graduation supports, I think that we are doing a lot. And I think I'm glad that we're, we're trying to get kids back into those like career development programs and getting those, them back into those college and career pathways. Because I know that a lot of them were off track and I'm glad it seems like slowly we're finding our way back after these circumstances. So I'm really looking forward to the rest of this year and yeah.
Thank you. So, do you have anything you'd like to add this evening?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everyone who presented tonight. Thank you to Travis for doing his best to explain epidemiology to us, even though he's not an epidemiologist. We very much appreciate it and the way that you try to answer all of our questions when you can. Thank you to Francesca for your continuing equity work with the district. It shows in so much of what happens that I see around us. And it's very obvious that you care and the district cares. And I think it makes a world of difference for every student here. I always love hearing you present. And thanks to our partners from the HPD for coming out tonight. I think I'm encouraged by all of this. I know that it's been a rough time with COVID generally. I know that it's been a rough past couple of weeks, more specifically, but I feel heartened by what I heard tonight. And I know that we're going to be able to continue to take that focus towards our student wellness into the future. And I think I have good things to bring back to the people who have been asking me all week, like, so what's up? When I've been seeing them in school. So thank you everyone for the work that we saw tonight and I hope it can continue into the future.
Thank you. When we come back and remove that air, it gets so.
I don't have anything additional except just keep doing the great work that you're doing and we're just going to keep staying open as much as we can and making sure that everybody's safe. And I will see you at next meeting, some of you.
Sheehan, do you have anything you'd like to add this evening?
I do, thank you. Well, I first wanted to start off by saying how exciting it is that the Pathway Center is finally opening. And this seems like such an anticlimactic opening because of just the way things are right now, but just wanting to recognize the incredible amount of work and planning that has gone in to opening this Pathway Center and thinking about what a huge resource hub this is going to be for our students. And so just want to just take a moment to really celebrate the fact that it's opening. And so just well done on, on all regards there. I, thinking about the, one of the slides that Dale you had shared about kind of where our current seniors, juniors, sophomores and freshmen and, you know, how many of them have lived in online only versus, you know, half, hybrid and, and whatnot. It, it is completely jarring to me to see the information displayed that way. And I think it re-emphasizes the importance of needing to prepare our students for what life beyond K-12 is going to be. Given that COVID has really changed the way we live, I think that not only do we need to prepare our students to be career and college ready, but we also need to think about just those critical life skills that they have missed out on by being in person with their peers. And especially with, you know, the uptick in bullying and cyberbullying, you know, wanting to be mindful of the types of resources and even extracurricular activities or, you know, some of the courses that we're providing them. If we're able to embed some of the more practical life skills into some of those courses. I mean, that's something that I would, I would love to see from even a curriculum standpoint, just given where our students are right now and what they would need to really be prepared after they leave our doors here at HSD. And then the next thing I would say is, you know, is, is we are entering into the next huge wave with Omicron. Wanting to recognize the strain this is going to place on our teachers and wanting to make sure that we have the right resources and support for our teachers as they are really being the hands and feet for our district. And I know that we have already embedded a lot of professional development days or even, you know, days where if they need to switch to hybrid, you know, we're giving them a day to, to help prepare for that. And so I think, you know, continuing to do that and continuing to strategize how we can really lift up our teachers in this time where they are having to go back and forth with just the changing nature of, of what Omicron is doing is something that I would love to continue being a good partner with our, with our teachers in. And then the last thing is, was, is just a comment is, when we were talking about the equity work, I, Francesca, I really do appreciate the, the lens in which you have approached how we embed equity work into our instruction and our delivery and really everything that we do. Oftentimes I see equity work as just an afterthought. You know, you build out the program, you build out the strategy and then you try to apply equity and on top of that as if it's a cherry on top. And that's not the case. And, and I love and appreciate how we have embedded equity work into the design of, of how we even deliver our education and how we go about our strategy. So just really appreciate your leadership on that and, you know, what everyone has done to make sure that equity really is at the forefront and really is the backbone of how we approach our work here at HSD. So just really appreciate everyone, Happy New Year. Hope things get better soon, but just really appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I shouldn't have assumed that I knew what I was doing and I should have turned the agenda over. I realized that we skipped superintendent time, so we're going to take a break in board. Remember time and go out of order in the agenda and it is Mike's turn.
All right, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all our presenters tonight. It has been an incredibly heavy lift to keep schools open right now. And I'm really proud of the fact that so much of the work that we focused on tonight is work that was, started well in advance of where we are right now. And it's paying off in pretty big ways. When I think about the, you know, we're, we're ready to celebrate the opening of the Pathway Center again in the next month or so. But that is, that was a dream of Dale's about three years ago. And it was, as our grad rates had gone up, she came in and had a very frank discussion with me about, hey, we're doing great, but we've got to do something different if we're going to take that next step. And I don't think any of us would have predicted that that Pathway Center now was going to help us get back on track and, and continue the good work that, that we started. So just love the, love the foresight with that one. And we have been, and yes, the equity work and getting them back on track with graduations. And Travis, thank you for your, your work to be Mr. COVID for these last couple of years. I appreciate that. Probably not a title you ever wanted for yourself, but one that we appreciate and all of the details that you have around it. I will also say we've been engaged in listening sessions with our licensed staff. We're just finishing those up and we're just starting listening sessions with our classified staff. And to Sheehan's point about our staff members really being on the ground floor of that work. Our teachers are doing incredible work, our classified staff. It is amazing that we're still able to get our kids to school every day. Regardless, I mean, despite some of the staffing shortages that we've had, the, the work that our transportation folks do and our facility folks and our nutrition services and all of the, all of the people that serve our students more in a behind-the-scenes type of way. Just so proud of the work that they do and the effort that they give and have been giving them for the last couple of years. So my thanks to the staff and to our team of presenters here today. And it is Board Recognition Month and we'll do, we'll do that at our next regular meeting. But thanks for all of your time and effort as well. Much appreciated.
All right, thank you. Lisa, you have anything to share with us tonight?
I'll go with what others have said, Happy New Year. And thank you to everyone who took the time this evening to come and present to us. And also really sharing in the hope that things with COVID to get better soon, but understanding that they will get worse before they get better. And then I just, I heard the word mild thrown around a couple of times this evening in terms of talking about Omicron and just being aware that it might appear more mild because so many of us have done what was necessary for the greater good and got vaccinated. But the fact that there are such a higher number of breakthrough infections is really concerning, understanding how the disease tends to mutate, right? And what will the next variant look like when it can breakthrough and might also be dudlier? So let's just all be aware that it's not like it ends with Omicron and it's going to go down to a common cold. Wash your hands and wear your mask and get vaccinated. Wash your hands and wear your mask and get vaccinated so we can get back to normal because our kids need to be in person, in school all the time. And just brushing things off and pretending like they're not serious is certainly not how we do that. So just want to end with that. Thank you so much.
Do you have anything to share with us tonight?
No, just a big thanks to all of our staff. I mean, keeping kids in school is becoming a harder lift every single day. And I just am awed by the dedication that you guys have to show up every day. Teachers, our support staff, making plans way in advance to like, if something happens, it's just super incredible. And then to get these fantastic presentations about social emotional learning, equity work, to make sure that we're still focused on all those important things. I mean, it is really amazing. And I think you guys are doing awesome and really hang in there. It will get better. But not now, but it, it eventually will.
Thank you. Monique, anything to share with us tonight?
Not too much additional. Thank you so much again for everyone with the staff and classified, licensed, all the workers out there trying to keep the schools open. Appreciate the presentations this evening and you guys have a good evening.
Thank you. Nancy, anything to share with us tonight?
Just another thanks. We should not take for granted the opportunity to say the thank yous. They're not light, they're not mild, they're not, it's not minimal. What we're going through is unprecedented. And if you would have told me that on Christmas Day I'd test positive and I'd have been quarantined since 12/26, I'd have told you you were crazy. If I would have told you that I would have had to navigate going to a hospital, being COVID and then told to stand outside in the cold and the rain because I'm COVID positive. Those kind of things you don't anticipate and they're traumatic. And I just, I just want to say to everybody, I agree with Lisa. Please don't trivialize anything that happens to anybody. I'm thankful I was vaxxed. I'm thankful I was boosted. But I still had significant problems and I'm still on medication and I'm still trying to rest and still trying to recover. It's real and it manifests with everybody in different ways. And I just ask you to be respectful of that. And thank you all because I would have never, ever imagined, I just didn't know how good we really were. I'm just going to say it like that. I knew that I was in a good school district for my kiddo. And I knew that I liked the people that I had met. And then someone said, you ought to run. And here I am. And I had no idea how really good we are. And meetings like this today remind me of how good we really are. It's not a comment on how far we have to go. We know we have lots of, we, we, we got a long way to go. We get that. But the fact that we're where we are right now is impressive. And sometimes we just have to pause just a little bit to celebrate that. So Mike, I appreciate your leadership, all of the people on the call today. It's so, so, so important. And to be able to work with a board that understands that the kiddos come first and we have to do what we can to support the teachers, to support the kids, to support their families. It's just, it's, it's a good feeling and we don't get too many of those. And thank you, because I just got out of my house on Sunday for a one-hour drive by myself in my car by myself. So thank you. I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Guess it's me. So I just want to thank my colleagues for the meaningful and thoughtful discussions we've had tonight. I don't think any of us take this work lightly. I think we all realize the difficulty we're in. So I appreciate us using the work session for the free exchange of ideas that we, that it should be. So thank you for that. I recognize that, you know, and thank you to all of our staff, teachers, classified, everybody keeping students in buildings every day where they should be, keeping it. So I, I know it's probably a little more complex than this, but it feels like if I had to summarize to somebody and only had a few words, I would say, for as long as we possibly can, we would like to keep classrooms, students in classrooms and activities going, right? So for, for as long as we can be safely conduct in-person activities, we should do, do so. And I, I appreciate how dedicated everyone is to making that happen. I understand it's the most difficult time in everyone's career to be in education. And I don't want to trivialize that in any way, but I also think it's the most difficult time in anyone's career to be in the airline industry or the restaurant industry or an accounting firm or just pick the, so it, it's a global pandemic. It's affecting the entire world. It's, but I think together we will all get through it. So thanks, everybody, again. And I guess we are adjourned until January 25th. Thank you.